Somebody want to call down? They're trying me to be agenda. They're my home.
It's six o'clock, so let's call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Please be aware, you can hear the announcement that the meeting is being recorded by Owl Technology and will be available on the city's YouTube channel. So let's start with the roll column, please state your name. Mary May.
Nick Wolf here.
Okay, Asia.
Want to mute it? Fine.
Thank you. In a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
All in.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to reports, I don't see the sheriff, so Kathy in the library.
Kathy Bang, we're next to the library director. Just, uh, things are just kind of going. Says, well, we are going to do a couple of community meetings in October to try and get communities to feel on what they might like to see their library look like if we were to work on getting an addition or new library. So it'll be out October 13th, Friday from one to two, and October 19th, Thursday for seven to eight. No questions for me?
Thank you. Fire department, Mike?
Mike's saying fire. Two hundred and ten calls for service so far this year. Those were on a pretty big base, same as last year, basically. We've been discussing the improvement of the fire station on the addition. We don't have anything to present at this time. We're still discussing it, working out all the ideas between everybody. We did host testing last night, that's all taken care of. Other than that, everything's running pretty smooth.
Was that post-testing at Pevero, is that what I saw out there?
Yeah. I love to use the property.
Very nice of that.
Yep.
Okay.
Nothing.
Thank you. No parking, Chris?
Chris, no parking. Reports there, again, no new residents this month. P and Z, completed discussions on the second going in the single lot residential districts. They have to draft that in ordinance, they'll look at that ordinance next week. We also discussed renewable energy restrictions in the city of Fairfax. The P and Z felt that there's no reason to put any restrictions on that at this time. Look at it case by case, if and when they come up. Had a couple notices go out around here. The sidewalk scanning equipment did arrive the 21st. Unfortunately, it arrived actually Friday, Monday morning, guys went out early and started scanning incorrectly. Their video on how to scan didn't show up till about noon on Monday. So a lot of it had to be re-scanned, still has to be re-scanned. I do have everything scanned once, so I'm to the point now, just going back and re-scanning the places they need additional scans on. What I was told is I'm walking too fast, I need to slow down. Anyway, I'm getting a lot of miles in. Burger Lane, 320 Burger Lane, they're in the process of getting demo bids, demo permits, that property will be demoed here. Everything, the insurance is coming together nicely. I did want to quickly talk to you guys about no parking and if there's an option for the city to enforce that staff. We'd have to write an ordinance, send it through council. When I was doing the scanning, there were 14 cars parked across the sidewalk. Where you can walk through without going on the grass. I brought it up to Joanna to tie, Cindy had thought maybe divest if we talked about it up here. We have a lot of complaints about people parking in no parking zones, people parking for weeks at a time without moving the vehicle. These are things that are against our ordinances. The city of Palo went through this eight months ago, nine months ago. They did send an ordinance through, passed it where the staff can write no parking tickets. It's cured the problem in Palo, which may be something we should look at here. You know, Lee County's not going to do anything about it, they don't have time, manpower. I feel foolish even calling them up and stuff, because I get the same response every time we call. So I'm going to think about.
How do they handle people that don't pay? Because that was our, I think our question before was that, is that if everything adds, go back to the attorney?
Yeah, I guess that's probably the question for the attorney. Cindy did suggest that we have the attorney, if we do do an ordinance, that we have the attorney draft that ordinance, so it's a bulletproof. I think that's a great suggestion. And this isn't something where we'd be going out and looking for attractions. What we're looking for is when we get complaints, we can act on them. And then, like I said, when we're doing the sidewalk scan stuff, if they're parking across the sidewalk, they need to pick it, they're parked in the middle parking itself, they need to pick it.
Do people know they can't park across the sidewalk? Like, if you're in your driveway and you have somebody pulling, like, you're there and you have two cars and somebody comes to visit and they pull in behind you and they block the sidewalk, do you know?
I didn't know, it's usually a common defense in court, is, that's how they get away with it, is I didn't know.
But, thanks for my presence.
Yeah, that, yeah. That would be my first.
And decree, and then enforce, yeah.
When was the last time that, I don't recall the last time we looked about writing an ordinance and forcing tickets or issuing tickets, right over on discussion?
I mean, it was, it was stuff about, basically the sheriff has to write the ticket and then we have to, as far as doing all the legal end, it's all on us, with our attorney to defend everything or take them to court. They write the tickets and that's the end of it, and we have to do everything else after that, so it's a costly process.
Put the cell phones on, you know, they have to take time to stand to take the pictures, so it's pretty concrete right there that the violation happened. Like I said, it's, it's helped Palo, I may have a lot of problems with it.
I'm worried about not collecting money, like, that's why I was asking for it, slash the evidence ever talked about when I was on council, since then, they passed the state law where you can go after tax or funds for people who are habitual non-payers, so. I mean, it's something to look into.
I guess we're going to have to see what that process is, I just, like, if you write a $25 ticket and it costs $300 to collect the $25 ticket.
Yeah, Palo made their 75 because the same thing, it's not worth fooling around with $20, $5. So they made it substantial and really.
I just didn't know we were having that issue with parking.
Yeah, we had quite a few parking complaints, there's really nothing we could do about it. I mean, I've called the sheriff before, we did that one instance with the sheriff came out, didn't take it, but did knock on the homeowner's door and tell them we're parking there, it was in front of a community mailbox. Ridiculous. That's been a couple of years ago, here and now, at least, but, like I said, it's something that if we can take care of it here, like, it's not getting any better, I should say that.
Are we looking primarily at this, maybe stuff to think about, or ask a lawyer, or are we thinking primarily of just no parking or parking infractions like over the sidewalk? Or I heard you mention vehicles sitting in one spot all the time at times.
Those are the best ones, we get. Fairly consistent.
I agree, you could start to squirt in a pair of fax bags. Where they can see it. Start with that, a couple different times, we didn't need with it.
All right, so any questions for me?
Oh, I did, Chris, before you did that. The P and Z, they're, they were talking about split driveways, things like that, what are they talking about, what the additional structure on a single family, didn't really go into any detail, but I saw.
That's the ordinance you drafted, so right now it's allowed two, two single families on one lot, if you have the size of yard, that's how I read it in the code, that's how P and Z reads it in the code, so that's what they want to change.
Okay, because I thought you could only have one, I thought you could only have one main structure, and then if you wanted a garage, it had to be sog.
That's not how it reads in the ordinances. It reads if you have enough side yards and setbacks, so you could have two dwelling units on the same line.
Two primary, right?
Two primary.
Primaries.
And that's what they want to change, they want that to be a division.
Not accessory, but primary.
And then, one of the P and Z members wanted to add that there are no shared driveways on that either.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that it was a word like that.
That ordinance, all right, and P and Z will look at it next week, and it'll be, be on the agenda for next month. And that's what they're looking at, it's residential.
Okay, I just, I didn't think that was allowed to begin with, that's why I was like.
Well, we didn't either until we started reading into it.
Well, that makes sense.
Thanks, Chris. Brian is off the land tonight.
I am Wednesday night, I'll just go on in. So, I mean, it's been busy, we got the flushing done, put it down. Then we're going vigorously on recreating and seating some spots that needed to be addressed because the steam window's down, so we've been working pretty hard on that. The new service truck show, and been working on trying to get that outfit and build it and get it usable, so, so we got a point to go on that, but it's here, almost ready to go. They did a lot of work on the playground for Heartland Heights, which I'm sure Joe can discuss further, but just got some time on that. And Lee's been trying to do his best to keep it up on the home, gives you lots of two additional rooming people, so he's been pretty, pretty busy and a little stressed on trying to keep up with that, he tried to talk me down, so. By the way, there's a bit of miscellaneous stuff, anything for maintenance?
Trees, has that started yet?
Trees, the trees are done.
They are done?
Yes, they are, they got all the trees out, got them stumped, filled, and recreated and seeded to send them in satisfaction, so he was happy.
Any issues with any home residents?
I believe there was nothing, I never heard you talk about anything, so I think it went really well and well.
They worked fast.
Yep, and even though they were the lowest price, they did a really, really good job of keeping stuff clean, so. He was happy.
Kevin, water, wastewater.
Kevin, starting the water. Well, as of today, these watering hours have been needed for the contractor to show up this week and get started. So we're ready for it, the town is on pressure on the new boost station, ground storage day, so nobody should notice anything different. System is working exceptionally well, we did a little fine tuning today, it smoothed a lot of things out. Well, number one is back up and running, we got the soft start a week and a half ago when I was on vacation, and Ryan got it back installed and it's still working. So I want to commend Brian and the whole group when I was gone, they had a whole lot of challenges that proposed in that week, and they worked for every one of them, just really good, so. Few complaints, water complaints, we dealt with just minor little things, and working on the pilot for the new water plant, and other than that, things are pretty well, so.
Any questions for Kevin? Thanks, Kevin.
So, it's all right, I'm just going to get my report from here, since I'm a little huddled up. You guys have my reported packet, the Heartland Heights, we do have a dedication, this Friday night, the Heartland Heights apartment is pretty much ready to go, with the exception of a few amenities, which I'm starting to round up those poles now, for those, and those amenities are things like benches and trash cans and those sort of things. The dedication is at six o'clock, we actually have a food truck that is coming, which we'll talk about a little bit later on, too, but we have a food truck that will be there from 5:30 to 7:00, the dedication's at six, we'll have some chalk for the kids, so they can chalk the walk in the park and have a good time with it. There's a, a member of the parks board, her husband does some DJ, and we're trying to figure out how to get some electricity to the park for him, so that he may be able to hook up some equipment, have some music out there, so. But, as soon as they took the snow fence down around the playground, and it all filled with the wood chips, took that down, there were kids on it immediately, that park's getting used like you can't believe to start with, so. Then the only other update that I have for you is I just found out today about four o'clock that the lights are on at Hawks Ridge Park. The boiler lights are on a timer, they are set to, they're dim, down to 15%. Tonight, after the meeting, I'm sure it will be dark, and I'll go by and take a look at it, and I'll have an update. As I understand, the lights now are on a timer, they automatically go off completely at 10 o'clock, do not come on until the next night, and I'm not sure that was the purpose of those boiler lights on the trail. I think the purpose of the lights on the trail was that we had some lighting there continually, just like we do at the complex, around that trail 24 hours, or at least when it's dark, so that things that shouldn't be going on in our parks aren't going on in our parks, that's one of the deterrents of it, is having that lit, so. But I'll have more information on it, like I said, I was unaware of it until today, so I'll get some more information on it tonight. Any other questions on, anything for me?
Okay, we'll back up, the sheriff's deputies here, welcome.
Deputy, to the sheriff's office, due 8:00 to 9:12 here, on calls, sheriffs. 38 hours.
Any questions for the deputy? Thank you, have a good night. Okay, the mayor's report is in the packet, I just wanted to make a couple of additional comments on my visit down to Ely this past, we have just some items that were especially interesting and things going on down there. They have a bond referendum coming up in November, because they want to build a new city hall and library and community center complex. The bond referendum will have to be voted on by the citizens, they need a 60% vote for $7 million, however, they will need to fundraise an additional $5 million. So they've got a real heavy lift, but they're very optimistic that they can get it done. They attribute their enthusiasm to the enthusiasm of, they have two real strong friends groups, they have a friends of the library group, and also a friends of the parks group, and they also have a, a strong city administrator promoting and providing a lot of information to residents, so for that I found very interesting, that things can get done in other ways than, they won't be able to do it unless they get the $5 million in fundraising, nothing happens unless they get that, so, well, watch out, see, good luck to them. And this is a little tid note, they also use Owl Technology in their city council meetings, and they also do Zoom along with that, just a quick little update on that. All right, engineering, Shane.
Shane Ritz, I'm there, I have my reports in the packet, any questions for me?
I apologize, these reports are not in the packet. That's my fault. I'll put them in there tomorrow.
Is there anything on the report, Shane, that you are going to talk about later that should be brought to the council attention?
Pretty much the normal stuff, there's a private board, and there's
Yeah, they'll be in there tomorrow morning.
Okay. Next, Maggie Berger, Miss Fair Financial is here for our annual tip report.
Good evening, thanks everyone for having me, I laid those colorful sheets in front of you, and we'll kind of walk through them here. I remind you that the red sheet outlines the general obligation debt that the city has outstanding, if you go, there's page one, page two, and on page three, we get to the 2023 debt that was issued, that's being paid with TIP and water, that was issued for $1,300,000, general obligation corporate purpose, it was done here in June, it finished in June, I should say, closed to June, at an interest rate of 4.4702, that's what the TIC stands for. This bond is callable after June 1st of 2030, that's why we've got that underlined under that column, we give you your total principal, total principal and interest, then we start to, on the end of page three and page four, we start to buy that debt down, these are the different ways from the different issuances of debt that you're paying for that, you're using TIP revenue, your 2015 bond had some general fund money for the fire truck, we're using water and sewer revenue for you, we had the 2020 also had general fund money for fire truck, and then the 2021 was using some local option, sales tax, so as in the past, we do not show that you will be levying any property taxes for the debt that you have currently outstanding, including 2020, that was just issued. We also then go onto our orange pages, and this outlines the gen, I'm sorry, this outlines the revenue debt that the city has outstanding, there's a 2008 sewer revenue debt, I do believe that was your sewer plant, that is with the SRF, and that is at a 2% interest rate, we also have the 2020, which is the water revenue debt, this was for water storage, that is also with the SRF, that is at a 2% interest rate as well. The 2008 debt is paid by sewer revenues, 2020 debt is paid by water revenues, there is no property tax for either of these debts because they are revenue debts, they have to be paid with the revenues of the system, and by doing that, they do not count against your debt capacity, so we always get lots of questions as to how you can finance a large project, if that large project, you know, is going to count against your debt capacity. Typically, revenue bonds for water and sewer projects, we appreciate it when you do them through revenue, they don't count against your debt capacity, but then they are subject to you raising rates and keeping those rates in a manner according to be paid that way. The yellow pages outline any of our debt, any of our general obligation debt from the red pages, that's being paid with TIP revenues, so as we prepare for bond issues with the city, Cindy and I are always talking about what are the repayment sources going to be, and we're giving you preliminary schedules, and then after we finalize with interest rates, those debt schedules, then we do a breakout for you, and these are the parts that are represented by TIP, so goes on for a couple of pages, on the third page, the 2023 portion of your debt, so 1.3 million was the total debt issuance, 720,000 is what is being done with TIP revenues, so we've got that there, we do not have any LMI set aside yet at this point in time, that's low to moderate income set aside, it's not necessary or needed at this time, and you're going to certify to the TIP taxes for fiscal year 25 approximately $1,346,000 for the debt that you have outstanding, it's hard to say that we're going to certify that, but that is coming up before your December meeting, you'll have to have that certified by December 1. We go on to the general obligation debt capacity, and we're going to look at column number two, and we're going to read straight down on these green pages. We have, the city has an actual valuation of $341,350,000, that gives you total debt capacity of $17,67,000. You had debt outstanding of $9,685,000, there's also annual appropriation debt, so the 2020 B debt was done as annual appropriation debt, that was a large issuance of debt, we did it, we negotiated it in a way that we only have to count the annual amount against your debt capacity, so we've got that $340,000, you'll pay back, $1.4 million of debt this year, you'll also pay that $340,000, so down there at the bottom, remaining debt capacity that's not obligated is $8,837,000. If we take off 20% today, and we've always had this conversation, you probably should not issue more than 80% of your total debt capacity available to you, if we take that $3.4 million off, you still have remaining debt capacity of $5,424,000. Had we not done the annual appropriations on that debt for 2020 B, you would have very small amount of debt capacity remaining, not the 5.4 million. Your city did grow by 7.4% last year, we did build in a 2.5% growth rate, and this goes on for a couple of pages. I will remind you, we all got those wonderful notices from the county earlier in the year, and everyone statewide is anticipating to see, on average statewide, a 25% increase in valuations coming in for fiscal year 25, which will start next July 1st. We will know what that looks like come January 1 of this year, so it will raise your debt capacity, it will give you more debt capacity because of that valuation, the valuation, remember that you're looking at on this is 100%, this is not what the valuation is that you can use to tax the people in your community, this is the 100% before all rollbacks are applied for tax purposes. The last part of our TIP report is the TIP actual debt report, this is where we outline anything that's in your TIP district that's grown in valuation, we look at column number two, which is fiscal year 24, and we read straight down, you've had incremental or TIP growth in commercial value of $19,805,000, really big growth in residential of $143,482,000, this is a significant growth in valuation in your residential area, and so we attribute that to just natural growth that you've had, also, any multi-residential property has moved into residential property, the classification of multi-residential has gone away, this produces $96,237,000 of TIP valuation, if we take that times the TIP tax rate of $25.50, it produces approximately $2.4 million in TIP receipts, you're using approximately $1.6 million of those to service your annual debt, and Cindy, about unclaimed TIP dollars, about $816,000, again, this has grown because you grew significantly in your overall valuation of the housing area, but those unclaimed TIP dollars are not dollars that we're telling you to claim, those are actual dollars that roll back into the budgets of the city accounting in the school districts, so anything you do not claim benefits in a growth way, it benefits not only you, the county, and the school districts' budgets as well. We also give you the Heartland Heights a couple pages back, it is not an active TIP district, meaning we've not certified anything to that TIP district yet, not needing those funds, you're paying that debt and that obligation with water hookup fees, sewer hookup fees, which was one of the goals originally, if at any time we need to start and activate that, we'll put a starting date in, and then anything that grows over and above that at that time, they will be collected for TIP, but then that will be subject to that low to moderate income, which is what we're trying to avoid, so. Lot of information, short amount of time, but questions do you have for me?
What are you guys projecting for, and I know it's making impossible question to answer, interest rates on G W debt moving towards, obviously, it jumped up a percentage the last couple of years.
Correct, so, just listening to the Federal Reserve, also listening to some economists over the last couple of weeks, they're stating that they anticipate they could raise rates one more time in the December timeframe, that would be maybe a That would be maybe a quarter of a percent is what they're stating. But then they also stated the same regard that they'll start rate, that they'll start lowering interest rates in the January to February timeframe. Do we think they're going to lower them and get you back down to 1.5 or 2% interest? No. It's going to take some time to get there. But do we think that incrementally they'll start to bring them down a quarter of a percent at times? Yes, I really do believe that. So, you know, this time next year, maybe we'll be comfortably in 3.5% range instead of 4.4% range. But we just don't know until, you know, the bond market itself is hedging its bets on that scenario. The bond market is saying by middle of next year, we should be in that 3.5 to 3.75% for GEO. The bond market has been pretty accurate in the past. And so we'll just kind of wait and see if those economists really have their crystal ball working well. I know this was a shock to the system for this, this last issuance that you did. I will note, I've given some presentations and did about a 25-year study. So back in 2001, August of 2001, right before September 11, interest rates in the GEO market for 20 years were 6%. Then in the 2007 timeframe, in the summer of 2007, those interest rates were at 5.5% and you had the global financial crisis. And then they were creeping back into the 4.5% to 5% range right in about January of 2020, right before COVID. So we have seen them creep up. It just seems that there has always been something in the market that has drastically reduced them back down to that 0, 1, 1.5% range.
Any other questions for Maggie? Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you very much for having me.
Question number seven. Discussion on possible motion concerning Heartland Heights Pond improvements deadline.
Hi. Bruce Sevick and Shane Schrader with Iowa Lot Development. We're here to ask the city to extend our August 31st deadline for the total improvements of the Heartland Heights Pond area. Shane Schrader can come up and tell you this is out of our part of the information. But we have a couple more builders that would like to get some homes started yet this fall, so we'd like to extend that deadline. I threw out December 31st as an option. And Shane can go into the detail here where we're at with construction.
So there's a few items on there in the development agreement that the city did not want to do. Cynthia's Sewer made one of them. That was all city funds that had to be added to the project that we didn't want to spend right now because it's going to be quite a ways down the road. All of the water quality basin stuff is, all the utilities on that are complete. There's some touch-up grading work, but for the most part, I think Shane and Jonathan said it pretty well. Pretty well complete. We've had discussions with the city about turning them over and Shane maybe can answer this better. But we kind of hope then by the end of the year, everything turned over.
Yeah, I haven't looked at the site and stuff in the month of what we've been out.
Yeah.
The burn's been installed on the Bollman property and the rear wall's complete. We're going to have our engineer go out and certify the elevations, give that certification over to Hall and Hall. And then we'll also get all the pins set for the area that the city will be taking over.
So there's a deadline of the 31st, but obviously we learned it's September. Is that some more extension? Is there something else, other stuff that's going on that you guys are asking for an extension?
No, we can't make building permits at all right now. And we have, we have two builders and it has been quiet this year for a lot. So we don't want to tell someone now that we have two heated and interesting, hey, we can't build the houses this year. No, that we finally have a couple builders coming in and want to build here for winter.
So is that what we're talking about here basically is the final phase where we're not supposed to allow like any more permits until we accept? Is that what the whole of this, right?
How much time is, would it entail? And you said they proposed at the end of the year, but to get those improvements completed?
Oh, if the weather holds here, we should be all probably done in the next 30 to 60 days. But then it's going to take at least a month or city, you know, to go through city process to get them approved.
I don't see an issue extending it. To look at for people to build homes and on something as minute is, you know, finishing touches on that. I don't see why that should hold up putting up homes. So I don't know, what'd you say, December 31st?
Yeah.
I don't see an issue with it.
I don't either.
That's a motion to extend the deadline to December 31st, 2023.
You know, second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Moving on to number eight. Going to open a public hearing on fiscal year 24 budget amendment number one. Have we received any comments yet?
No.
Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments on this budget amendment? If not, a close to the public hearing, any council discussion? Any questions, council? Okay, just none. We'll move on. And I need a motion for a resolution to approve this budget amendment number one.
Motion.
Second.
Go ahead, call please. Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to number 10. Consider a resolution to approve the annual appropriation bond payment in fiscal year 25 for $23,862.50. Any questions for Cynthia on that? This was one of the things that Maggie mentioned earlier, right Cynthia?
Right. Yep. So in the fall, we set what the needs for the bond are in fiscal '25. And the reason you do it now is before we certify to TIP and then before they separate out the taxable valuation to TIP and non-TIP. It's just kind of the first step in the process of getting the evaluations for the fiscal '25.
Any questions on that? Not? Consider a resolution to approve that bond payment.
For your motion.
Second? Second? Go ahead, call Mr. Trump.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Moving on to number 11. Consider a resolution to approve transfers for debt. Cynthia, you've got some explanations on this?
Right. So most of it is just your regular debt payments that are due December 1. And then at the end, you'll notice there's a remember in July, we did a transfer into the water debt service for the extra that the water debt fee doesn't cover. Well, then I suggested we do another $54,000. One, we paid off that loan early and so that had some water debt in it. And the new loan that we just did in '23, part of that loan is the water tower project. So it has some water and we didn't know about those requirements when we did the budget either. So that's what that other $54,000 is. The $130,000 at the end. When that '23 loan came in in June, I made my best guess to separate it between the bridge project and the water tower. I have since checked with Shane of what an updated estimate cost is. And so I'm just shifting some of the money from the capital improvement fund for the bridge into the water, just to make sure we have enough. It's still that same bond money, it's just splitting it different. And the rest of it is all just regular debt.
Any questions for Cynthia?
Also good.
Go ahead, call please, Marya. Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Item number 12. Resolution to approve the fiscal '23 annual street finance report, which is in your packet. Cynthia, do you have any comments on that?
No, this is just an annual report of any money used for street purpose. It could be road use money. It could be bond money. It could be general fund money. It could be lost money. It's just showing what we did last fiscal year for streets.
Any questions for Cynthia? Not? Need a motion to adopt a resolution?
Second.
Go ahead, please, Tom.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Auto in the packet, item number 13. To review and possible motions against the fiscal year '23 annual financial report.
So this is the entire fiscal year, not just the street, like the street finances. It's all funds, including streets. And after your approval of it, then this front page will be published in the paper and it has to be submitted this day before December 1.
Any questions for Cynthia? Not need a motion to approve? Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 14. Discussion on possible motion concerning the purchase order for the Northway Corporation.
So if you remember, we discussed this last time. The amount was on the claims, but we had neglected to put the approval of the purchase order as an agenda topic. So we told you that we were going to issue the check, but put this on for tonight's approval. So this was, Kevin even talked, this is work on the well line. It's already been completed.
I forgot.
So fired. Do you second?
Second.
All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Item 15, discussion on possible motion concerning security cameras in our parks. No one's issued?
Yes, so I'm sure most of you have read, we've had some vandalism at the complex that has been of vandalism. I don't want to really go into too much of it unless you guys really want me to.
It's pretty shit.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty straightforward. Anyway, my question for you is now, do we have an appetite for some live cameras? We've had dummy cameras in all the parks. And they, obviously you're not doing anything. So is there an appetite for live cameras throughout the parks? Mainly we would concentrate at Hawks Ridge, around the janitor's closet, or the janitors are in the bathrooms and the pavilion. Pavilion area at the complex and the parking lots, and then the bathroom area at Federfield. And if there is an appetite for that, I will begin getting those quotes together. Or if you have any direction for me, or if you tell me that, no, we don't care about the live cameras, then I won't do anything.
When you say live, you mean livestream to a server or something, or what do you mean?
Uh, so that we would have recordings of people going in and out of the bathrooms. Or we also have, this happens often, but it's just part of having so many cars in those parking lot. Hit and run, somebody dents a car and leaves without leaving any information. Some cameras may be able to get some license plate numbers. There was a theft out of a car a couple of weeks ago. I was, actually I'm a car owner though. I mean, if you're going to go somewhere, lock your car doors.
Don't leave a call for us in your car.
Yeah, yeah. So it, it, there's a couple of different ways to do it. Are do sell representative, have some other options for us that it doesn't necessarily go to a server. But anyway, that's part of the, the research is what works best for us out there.
Does this primarily happen during the summer?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it happens during the summer, but remember in October, we're going to lock those bathrooms up. So the bathrooms aren't going to be there. I mean, that's not an option for it. We've sustained damage and vandalism at Hawks Ridge and then recently at the complex. But the, you know, there's not as many people in the parks in the wintertime as there are when we have, you know, the P O E soccer or baseball or softball or anything like that. Or just summertime activities in the park, so.
How many incidents have you had so far this year, I mean, first of the year until now?
Well, I would say, you know, probably off the top of my head, maybe five. But Tom, I would also say that the last two that I'm talking about in the restrooms at the complex, they, they get more than one. That should be counted as about six right there because of how gross they were in nature of the vandalism.
So not, not so much the parking lots with vehicles, hit and runs type of thing for as far as Fairfax property?
Yeah, and I don't hear about all of the hit and run out there too. I only hear a few of those. But that happens more than what we probably know about. You know, Fairfax property. It's tough to tell unless we have a 24-hour guard down there, which these cameras would be. It's tough to tell when all happens in our parks. And that, that kind of goes back to tonight when I go to Hawks Ridge, the, the lights on the trail being shut off at 10 o'clock defeats the whole purpose of having lights out there to start with. Because of the people that shouldn't be there are just waiting till after 10 o'clock to be there. But that's, that's another subject. I don't want to get too far until the weeds on that, so.
I think possibly we want to get some cameras maybe on the bathrooms or something like that. Might not be a terrible idea to look into. I wouldn't be parking lots because even with cameras, that's some of the worst with insurance all the time. There's, there's no point in that kind of investing in money because it's not going to come a bit. When it comes to vendor vendors, hit runs and things like that, but.
You're, you're right.
I would say with the bathroom though, I mean, it might be worth it. I know a lot of people post the right videos on their friends of Fairfax Facebook page. I'm not saying anything comes of it, but they're, you know, they're going to pitch and things like that. But, you know, it might not be that I.
So do you want, I, I think it'd be a good idea just to investigate. Yeah, I don't think we have to do anything fancy. I think we can, just it has to be functional.
Do you have problems with the equipment getting vandalized or mostly just the structure?
It's, it's mostly just structured within it's mostly just structured. We haven't had any equipment vandalized, I would say. We haven't had any grounds vandalized, but we do a pretty good job, but you know, we still lock up the fields at the complex. So there's no access to that as far as getting a car in there. Same way with Federfield, we're pretty good about keeping that kind of off limits. Not off limits to the public, but off limits to being able to get something in there to tear up the grounds on it or something, so. But I, what I would ask though is if, if we're going to go through the, the steps of getting quotes and looking at what's availability out there, I don't know why, at least getting some ideas about the parking lot, what, what's it hurt? I mean, if we can get it, especially a la carte, this is what it is for the building, not just the bathrooms. But I think you need to look at the building as a whole. Eventually, somebody's going to try and figure out a way to get into that garage door, that shed. And there's probably $25,000 worth of equipment in there. Not to mention the electric and the water controls for the, the complex. So I
My experience with vehicles in parking lots is first to get a license plate that's clear. You know, you're talking a number of feet.
Sure.
By the complex and get something. How many times do you have, I don't know, I don't know if Fairfax is responsible for or wants to even get involved with that. I mean, you're. I mean, you're already busy enough where it hits them.
Yeah, it's, it's not a matter of being responsible for it because we're not responsible for it. But it's a matter of having a sense of additional security for the people that are in the parking lot. And, and again, if I bring in a quote to you and you say, we'll do this and we won't do this, I mean, the only thing that I'm out is a little bit of time getting that information for you, so. You know, we get the debate, the, the merits of having a foggy license plate all we want, but until we have something in front of us to actually take a look at to debate, it's just a matter of getting the information.
Those words, you get the information, I mean, more information.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just going to tell you that I think that we all would like to see something done. I don't want to spend $50,000 to do it, so I, I think we're just.
So that's my, that's the.
I'm just going to tell.
Mary Ann, you said.
Stick along.
Is that $50,000?
I'm just.
Yeah, just making sure.
Well, you'll be, well, you'll be lucky. We want to spend backup, just saying, I think we want to keep it something simple, something basic, and just kind of get our feet wet and see how it goes. But I don't think we want to spend a huge, we didn't spend money on the sound, so I mean, I just. Just going to be honest.
Yeah.
Don't want you wasting a bunch of time on something that work.
Well, trust me, it's not, it's not a bunch of time on my part. I mean, I tell them what I want, they bring back a quote for it. So I pretty much am already to determine where we need, what we need. It's just a matter of telling them and letting them bring it back to us.
Put some more alibi out there, right, and put in all that you trust. Just kidding. Well, he just said if they're anywhere close, they can get to them and, and like the fake cameras, they were moving them.
Yeah, yeah.
So that'd be somewhere where they can't get to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know what kind of experience that you've had at other parks, you know, and success with it. If it works, you know.
Well, my thing was, can you even get like a trail cam, you know, it doesn't have to be live.
Yeah, and I've had, and I've had some.
You know, put a trail cam up and just so you could, well, and then if something does happen, you can go back and recover it, yeah.
Yeah, and I've had some conversations with, with some people about the trail cams and there's some pros and there's some cons with that as well, so. But I think that's part of the presentation, right, is here's our options. This is what we could do. This is what the cost would be. What do we want to take away, what do we want to add? So am I hearing that you have at least some appetite to, to see some of this? Is that what I'm?
Continue with your research.
And $49,000 is my budget. I'm going to get rid of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Item number 16. Discussion on possible motion to waive the city's permit requirement for a food truck during the Hartland Heights Park grand opening. This is Joe.
Yes, so I was brought this idea from one of the park board members. There is somebody that lives in Hartland Heights that has a relative that does the Boulevard, Boulevard Grill is their food truck. And they have offered to, to bring the food truck out during the ribbon cutting or during the dedication out there in Hartland Heights Park. My thought is this, is this is a city function. And to make it just a little more special, the $25, we could waive that fee along with the application. They still are going to have to have insurance and they have to have their Lynn County food license and that sort of thing. But I'm asking just to, to waive that $25 fee for this event.
And to add on to that, I have a question for the council. I received inquiry from a resident that's hosting an event in October at the region and is considering inviting a, a couple of food trucks to come on their event. Any consideration that there's a food truck that comes just one time for just a few hours? Or do they have to pay a extra $25 plus a processing fee, right?
Well, they give them a lot of.
Just, just right back.
But I, I, I just want to, real quick, I don't think that is on our agenda joint. I, I don't mean to cut you off, that's not on the agenda. What I'm asking for is for this one event, I don't want to get these co-mingled. This is a city event that I'm asking for that $25 to be waived.
So moved.
I think, I think. I would, I asked for this to be put on the agenda, what the ordinance is. I understand that it's waived for USA, USA days. What's the reason to have that then? If we're, and how many times do we have, for example, throughout the year? How many times do we have that?
So they have to get a permit, a couple of reasons. One, so that you know who they are and so like if there's an issue or they're bothering residents or, you know, they have insurance, it's those types of things. So you don't have like people in town that, so.
Not, not.
The, the ice cream truck that comes around every single day.
And you'll, and you'll find that people that actually, well, now it's pretty limited, but people that actually are here, they don't want every willy-nilly person selling food in their area either. Without having to provide some of those, making sure they have insurance and some of that kind of stuff, so.
I guess my point is why even, not to eliminate the ordinance. I mean, I, I agree, it's important to have a peddler's ordinance. But why have 12204 and 12205? It was put on there, excuse me, whenever in 2020. Obviously I wasn't here or whatever that reason was, but we make exceptions. They really don't have one.
Well, I think there's a difference between a city-sponsored event
and just a bunch of roach coaches showing up trying to sell their diarrhea tacos to a bunch of Pee Wee kids on the weekend.
So maybe, maybe that we just need to look at changing that ordinance. So if it's a city sponsored event, that we can waive the, waive that fee. Yeah.
I'm just trying to, I mean, you guys probably haven't seen it enough, but I'm just looking for consistency. So when people look at something, that's an ordinance, that's what we have, rather than spending time with you to present it, you know, Cynthia to put it in here, us to talk about it. You know, and then there's another incidence possibility coming up again. Let's, if it's necessary, keep it in there. But maybe as we evolve, do we need the 04 and the 05 for that $5 and the $10? Maybe that's a great idea, Maryann. City-sponsored, do you have the authority to waive that? I mean, that's.
Well, if you wanted to amend the ordinance, not tonight, but that 22.19 list, license exemptions, people that already don't have to get it, you could add a number eight that's a city-sponsored event.
That way we wouldn't have to do this again moving forward and write that type of thing.
Yeah, then the, I mean, my, creating it broad enough allows us to have the exceptions because if we put in language like, well, except for city-sponsored events, someone's going to come in and say, soccer on the weekend, the city-sponsored event, why can't I roll up and sell that? Counselor made it. Sure, counselor made it, you know? The, the, they, and, and, and we kind of joke, all ordinances are set in stone in perpetuity until we change our mind. Or want to create, create an exception or variance or whatever. And I just think putting in a little language like that, not saying that there's a ton of like opportunists out there just waiting for something like that, but by creating it wide enough, you prevent problems and then on the occasional, you know, exception, like a grand opening of a park or something like that, then it can come to council because I'll be honest, this is the first time since the ordinance passes, it can come up. So I mean, I don't think we're spending a ton of time on something like that, is my. And it's $25, or we're spending time on this.
I agree with you, Tom. Absolutely agree with you on that part of it.
So what would the council like to do?
Well, I have a motion and a second to weigh that.
Wait a minute, okay, then we just need from all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Nate.
Motion carried. Okay. Moving on to number 17. Consider resolution to approve pay application number four from Nelson Electric for the park sliding project. John.
So you're paying for all the remaining work on this project except for the stuff that Joe mentioned earlier about the addition of the dimmer switch and timer of the Hawks Ridge. They're also going to throw defrost at the lenses on someone's ballons that are producing some eye glare. And that, all that remaining work, some of it's been done. The lenses are going to get done here in the next couple of weeks and potentially close out the project next month. Any questions on this pay happen?
So they're putting a dimble timer in?
Yeah.
Are they, are all the ballers wired for dimming?
Yeah.
They pull wire out, they're all dimming?
Okay, there's two, there's, yeah, there's two circuits up there. Clockwise, it's kind of clockwise, so I believe they actually had put two dimmer switches in there for each circuit. And, and two timers as well. It's my understanding, I think, of them that up there, they're from last week. And they're looking at throwing another dimmer in for a billion point two. Because it is a little bright as well, but. We do that on the occupancy too. Yeah, so that occupancy sensor is, you can dim it, but it's not much. So. Questions? A motion?
Second?
Second.
We'll call please, Maryann. Aye.
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 Okay. Number 18. Resolution to approve pay application number two from Midwest Underground Contractors for the water maintenance extension under Prairie Creek. John again.
So this is the last rig that they have for this project. Last couple of items after this, they'll close out their contract. But this was just some unfinished work. I didn't work on it, but I'll, I'll have to come back and touch up. Any questions?
Motion?
Sir?
We'll call please, Tom.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Continuing on with John, number 19. Resolution to enter an agreement with Soil Concepts for a seed warranted period on the water main extension under Prairie Creek.
Like most projects, we would do a one-year warranty on the seeding. So this is just a supplemental agreement with the seeding subcontractor. Because that's warranted period, so they pay on the book after the paid contracts, so. Questions? Refill company, does it work? Yeah, they've done, I think, seeding on every single job. They're all that's four or five years in total. They've got to come back some of the times, but they come back, so.
Motion, sir?
We'll call please, Maryann. Aye.
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 Thank you. We're going on to number 20. Resolution to accept the work, approve the balancing change order and approve the continued pay F for the water main extension under Prairie Creek. John.
So yeah, this is just all the paperwork that goes along with the closeout. Recommendation, you accept the work. Balancing change order to show the math and I give it up on the contract now. And then the continued release, an application, a base on the treaty. Questions? One, maybe that they still want the parts now, but. Insert a, a motion, so.
So moved.
I'll second.
We'll call please, Tom.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Number 21. Consider resolution to accept a proposal for geotechnical service for the West Cemetery Bridge project. John.
So we got two proposals and remind you, you will be entering into the agreement with the Geotech that's got on now. We're no longer going to have them as a sub to us. So these are two proposals that are coming from a few. And this, but yeah, this is for the West Cemetery, West Cemetery Bridge project. We had two proposals, one for Terracotta and one for Bronder Tech. Terracotta was significantly cheaper. I think based on the rate that the Geotech approval of 54 bridges and. Also. Geotech process on the West Cemetery Bridge to the 20th. So there will just be, you know, formally, speed release reports that they put together. They'll be recommended to go to Terracotta. With motion.
Second. We'll call please, Maryann. Aye.
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 Thank you. Number 22. New and discussed, the water supply treatment and well number five preliminary engineering report. Show.
All right. So as you're well aware, we are moving along with the well. So this is kind of the next step. This will be the treatment for that water well under four. In addition to that, we're also looking at well under five. So this is preliminary engineering for the water supply treatment for all wells that continue to be going on in the Melman Act property. So, yeah, I guess I'm just starting to get in and I'll kind of run through it. Ask any questions, you understand? I'll fit and ask any questions as they come up, but. Starting out on page one, there's the anticipated price of the overall project. And they've got that at about 13.5 grand. I talked with ISG today and they get it that they anticipate that probably closer to 15 grand. It's based on, I don't know if they get it through inflation, since this is where it is three, four years old. So obviously, this report is going to get updated a little bit. Get it, council will be at. So that number will be updated a little bit here, like you go up. On number two, the existing water demand, so on page three, table three. At the bottom of that page is, is the water demand that the city has seen over the last eight, nine years. You guys see that, 2014, 2022. It shows in 22 that the city's average demand was 22.1 million gallons a day. But peak demand, 2.58 million gallons a day. And in 2020, why it was a little bit higher, that's, I believe, the year that this flashback went online. So. So that information, in addition to population growth, is what's utilized to, you know, project future water use in the city. So we're going to the next page on table five, page five. Shows the projected growth from the. On one page, Cynthia.
Sorry, I thought you said two or five.
So those are projected uses. Column on the left, it's obviously the years. The next one is projected population growth, which we get a few years back. Storage tank. And those numbers we have on the file, so it's that. That the numbers, the next numbers is the average projected use per gallon per day. And the peak use. Sixteen uses. Everything's going to impact that, mostly it's summary usage will be over 100 yards. So July, August, so we just know that those numbers are higher than most ones. Take it back on the way, so. So, top of that page is kind of summary of what the existing wells are. The next page, I have no page number, sorry, yeah, top one page, there we go. So that top table there, table five, table are number one and two, are the old wells along Main Street. So that top table there, table five, table one, number one and two, are the old wells along Main Street. Show that we're currently getting about two hundred ninety-five gallons per minute, two hundred seventy gallons per minute from them. They're like next to each other, so when both of them are running, you get about four hundred twenty, four hundred twenty gallons per minute. But most two wells combined, well, I think it's about three hundred fifty gallons per minute, so. And on that, it shows the post-well number four, we're anticipating, hoping we'll wind up wanting to drill it, get five hundred gallons per minute, so. The table below there, that's the water quality. The existing water that we're drawing, with the story and aquifer. And the numbers are all pretty good. The two numbers that kind of stand out there are the two water quality items, and Kevin, this, because based on the council, not again, off again over the last several years on the D S. But, uh, third item down, the ammonia. See, well, number one is four point nine two, well number two is four point eight three, and well number three is two point eight nine. That's based on those here a little bit, but those are higher than we'd like to see. And then, uh, combined radium at the bottom there. Well, number one is two point six, well number two is, has a range between two point nine one and six point two. Kevin's mentioned those in the past, and that's a concern. The column on the right, the M C L, that stands for maximum contaminant levels, and that's the maximum levels that, that you can have until there are any issues that be an hazard. Bring that to your attention. So, some of them don't have maximum, but that's where you can see, well, I mean, I'm back with it. So on the arsenic, the second one at the top, that says point one, it should be point zero one. But, if you look back down at the combined radium, then that M C L is five. You have a range of two point nine one to six point two. Kevin, correct me, but I think we had one reading above the five, and then drop back down, so.
Correct, the, the M C L is based on the average four quarters.
Yep. So the average is five, but we have that one reading above it, so that's gross alpha.
On the table, second row, the second for bottom column, gross alpha.
It's a, another form of natural radiation that it's kind of like freon, uh, vibranium, and the gross alpha are all, they're luteite contaminants.
So. Yeah. Moving on. Treatment goals. On page eleven, and I'm not gonna run through those, if you have questions, Kevin can touch base on those if you'd like, or if you'd like. That's kind of the plan on how to treat the water quality. Kevin has a lot more knowledge on that, I'm sure, so. And number seven on my list here, existing treatment alternatives. So, kind of touching based on that a moment, and so if you look on page sixteen. There's a you know, reference back to that water quality table we just talked about, that the ammonia levels are, are higher, like, like it goes down to zero. That one, yeah. Certainly got that, well, two, one and two, had a higher, but a little bit of well three. Ultimately, with this, well four coming online, and well five is probably either at the same time or a follow-up there shortly thereafter. We'd like to phase out wells one and two, just because of their age, their pumping levels, and because of these issues with ammonia and combined radium. You know, right now, the city's done a very good job of managing those, but there's no surety that that will continue as we progress in the future, so. Long-term plans, we anticipate well one and two will be, you know, shut down, they may be stopped, or they may be used part-time during heavy uses, we haven't figured out exactly how they're gonna do that, but long-term anticipate well one and two will go offline. And we had more wells out of the downpour. Well three, obviously, we're gonna just continue to use that long-term, you know, for the next twenty, twenty-five years at least, as we're planning from the city's future. So, as you see on that water quality table, well three still does have some ammonia, so. You know, if we're gonna treat that ammonia at well three, there's really three options we could look at. One would be to pipe all that water before it gets into the system. Pipe all water down to the post-aidment plant on the Melman Act property. So that's about two point two miles of piping and through existing utilities, existing streets. That'd be, be complicated, it'd be expensive, and be difficult to do. The second option would be to install biological contact, contractor at the existing wellhouse and treatment there at well three. That's possible, but the other things that go on in addition with that, clear well and high service pumps, additional chemical storage, things like that. There's just not enough room on that site to get that done, so. So that option, you'd have to look at finding another site nearby that you can pump to this site and have work together, or community adjacent property where there's a house, and by that, or community baking lot, block or two away, but actually, that gets complicated too. The third option is to, would be to transition to free chlorine application. Probably be the most cost-effective way to do it, and you could possibly do it all on that well three site, but it's still, we still have to do some upgrades at well three, so. So that stuff is included in preliminary engineering report, but it's not part of the treatment that would be proposed on the Melman Act site, so. So there's no cost estimates or anything with it. We can put together a cost estimate, but the city kind of have to figure out which route you want to go with those three options. But, right now, nothing is being proposed, and the city's done a good job of managing the ammonia. And hopefully, we continue to do that, but if that becomes a problem, we'll have to look at one of these three options for well three, so. So right now, we're not proposing anything, but, and I think, Brian and Kevin, aren't you guys looking at possibly adding some monochloramines at the water storage tank to help with some of that?
Well, the whole system is based on monochlorine.
Yep.
So, basically, uh, there's two types of chlorine disinfection, free chlorine, which has no ammonia in the water, and a monochlorine, which is combined with ammonia and prevents the ammonia from converting to nitrite, which is the big contaminant the D N R is worried about. So as long as we can tie up all the ammonia, we can prevent it from converting, which is the ultimate goal. But, it's a longer-lasting disinfectant in a system for dead ends. It lasts a lot longer, many more days, but it's not as strong a disinfectant, so you lose all of that. Free chlorine loses its ability to disinfect in maybe twenty-four to forty-eight hours. So you gotta constantly have that water flow on dead ends, there's gonna be no chlorine there at all. So it becomes a huge struggle to maintain that, just for free chlorine. So I'm recommending that we stay with monochloramines, add ammonia to the new plant, use well three, put the ammonia in it, and not try to go to free chlorine. It, it would be, you might as well get rid of well three, one and two, and start over from scratch, if that's what you want to do. And I think that's absurd, in my opinion.
So, again, that's if we get an issue of all three, right now. You know, the water department, these guys have been doing a good job of managing that, hasn't been an issue, but I just want to make sure everybody's aware that that issue, and again, Kevin has mentioned this in the past, but now we're considering for, you know, part of the overall water system that we want to make sure people's aware of, so. Any other questions with that, or any additional comments, Kevin, you want to throw in there?
No, um, I guess, is there any questions about why we need the treatment, or what forms of treatment? You know, and what what you think the water kind would look like, or, you know, it's a hell of a price tag, you know?
Well, I know when we originally looked at all this, they said, we're gonna do this well and this and that, and we might have to do treatment, we might not have to do treatment, we won't know until we get the well up. And now we're already looking at a thirteen million dollar treatment facility, and I know our water quality here is crappy, but I mean, are there any chances that it's not gonna be that bad, and we are gonna, I mean, treat that level? Which I'm saying.
If you drill well four, and you go deep, like well number three, which the water quality is better, but you have more iron. You're gonna have to build an iron filtration and treatment plant anyway, otherwise, don't drill the well. And, uh, you can't, it'll be, remember in ninety-nine, when they did the water tower in the first well, and everything turned red? And was rust and mud? You're gonna have the same thing if you don't build a treatment plant through well four.
So the treatment is the thirteen million dollars just to set, or does it, is it relative to how bad the water is?
No, I think it's relative to just, this new treatment plant is gonna be more just concrete tanks. And a few blowers, some pumps, so the water's gonna come into the plant. Gravity flow from the wells, and gravity flow into a reactor with the equivalent to a large tank full of wiffle balls, and that's what the bacteria grow on, so that removes the ammonia. Then it goes into, gravity flows over another where, into the filters, which are gravity filters. And, just like our iron filters, where there were anthracites, say, anthraal, that takes care of the iron. So then it goes into a clear well, gets pumped into our system, and coordinated, I mean, I, I get what you're saying, it's, it's a very simple process, it's not really complicated. And in today's society, I can't even begin to comment on the cost. But, it's not a very complicated system, the biological is one more tank in front of the filters, that's it.
So is this something where, like, we spent thirteen million on the first well, and do we have to add to that system to treat wells five?
So what this, this cost includes the treatment and all the utilities to, to get there, including, you know, the sewer we talked about as part of that Church Street project, because all that needs to be done to service the Melman Act property. That's a very small number in that, thirteen to fifteen million, but, but all that, you know, that, all that's included, the site worth is probably three point two to three point five million. And, uh, building, and the treatment is probably, you know, about a minute and a half, twelve and a half million, but so it includes all of that, the treatment, and well number five as well. And, so, in, at some point, we're gonna kind of talk project triggers here next. When you add well number six, you'll have to update the plant to add that same system just in line for well number six, but it won't be as much. So you do one and four and one and five, plus you have to build in there, and you have all the infrastructure there. So yeah, there'll be extra cost, and you have to do well number six, and do the cost for well number six. And there'll be cost for updating the speed, but it won't be there as much.
So hopefully, it will be like a trace system, one tank, next tank, next tank, all three, well four. Well five will mimic that right next to it, well six, another row right next to it. So it should be inside the building, and just add another section right on the side. And then, so most of that cost for putting up the building and all that should already have been taken care of.
So it'll be big enough to handle all that?
That was the intent, was to make it big enough for expansion for almost the entirety except for maybe the corporate well. And maybe you might not need that at that time, because maybe the site is already at, at its maximum capacity, but it could fall out. So, it was designed for expansion, already in place, not down to go through the city. So.
Like Kevin had mentioned. You're treating that well three, you're treating iron, you're not treating ammonia. And it's more detailed than, that aren't being treated, that are, aggressive, we know we have those issues. So we want to make sure they're being addressed with this treatment, so. We're trying to get it so, at some point, well one, two, and then three are all online, if we have three or four wells up there, they're all, you know, treated in the same facility, or after, or physical treatments. Just want them to try and get a well flow. So. Well four, the, the idea is, you eliminate one and two, and then you add, after adding, well four. Well four, we'll look over the triggers here, kind of touch base on that.
What's the population that well four would handle?
We're, um, we can pull up the, the projected uses, the populations on the, on the table. That's like on page five, the projected, you know, uses. And obviously, you know, population plays a role in it, but if you get a big industry that comes in and uses one, two, five, nine, now, today, that's gonna really, you know, add significantly. Get the, uh, flashback, that added significantly. The population was going up, and, and the other, your gas.
That's true.
So it's not just population, but it, it obviously plays a role in it. So, and just something, you know, obviously, it's a large number, it's a large project. But just to put things in context. You know, back in ninety-nine, when the water tower was built, and the treatment was built there. I think Ford and Civic came to the city, and in the nineties, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, like, oh, this is development. It's like, okay, well, you have to look at water rates, you know, that. Well, between ninety-nine and then this year, you know, and the box has just got filled, opened up, I think there might be four, five, six bacon pots on the most natural area here, two weeks. Last twenty-three, twenty-four years, that's about two hundred and ninety acres, that, that added to the city, give or take. I mean, there's been some additions and things in that time, that was one of the cities that the whole of that city grew up in the last twenty-four years, one hundred and ninety acres. Since two thousand and fifteen, the city has annexed and about one thousand and ninety acres. So you're looking at four times, like, just in the last eight years. Now, obviously, it's not all built out, but you have to think, and you have to account for that. You know, Harbin Heights, city annexed seven hundred acres, over four hundred, four hundred and fifty acres is a great flat. So, I mean, the water's a little bit to pan, we're gonna continue to build up there. You've got the Trabero, and then you've got the Virgin, and Black Virgin, and, uh,
Regent.
Another industry that's growing up there, just over two, three year period. So it obviously grows, you know, the city, and so we plan for that growth, we've got to be able to supply water. Have to go hand-to-hand, we assign directly to the, to the, you can see, you know, two hundred and ninety, three hundred acres that the city has had. Most of you are pretty clear of that, that growth over the last, you know, two thousand and fifteen and four, we're looking at possibly that much area. So, so, it helps kind of put it in perspective a little bit. So, I think it kind of ties into some of these questions, then, is the the trigger-based planning. So this is for the, just water supply, it's not based on the treatment needs, but based on, you know, how much water do we need to supply our bottom line of our systems. Um, so if you go to page nineteen on table seven, hey. So what this shows on the left-hand side is, uh, it shows how many, you know, which wells are in service, and that, you know, that second column to the right, kind of which well we're next. So under table seven there, that top column on the left side is post one, two, or three, so those are the existing wells that the city currently has. And, uh, right now, burn capacity, what that means, this is a requirement by the D N R. The city is required to provide enough water to supply its users. In the scenario that it's a major well, it's a well that produces most water, grows out of service. So well number three went out of service in May, and the city will be able to get it back up until January, so you're going through the peak months of summer without well number three. You rely on wells one and two. And right now, you know, the city would not meet that requirement. So that's one of the reasons that, you know, we need this well four, you know, we've had a man over there talking to the council for the last few years, and we need to work through that. So that's one of the reasons that, you know, we need this well board, you know, we kind of end up with the talk for the council for the last few years, we need to work through this well board. If something happened to well three, something would have to go down. But so that's what that burn capacity is. They're looking at the number. That is projected without the highest production well out of service. And so right now it's point five, like yesterday, it's available. Look at that second one. So we had well four for a fast twenty-nine, two million gallons a day. So they're anticipating you need to start planning for well number five in twenty twenty-nine. So on the schedule, you know, it's good to leave again, we're looking to have, hopefully have everything online by twenty twenty-eight. So if you don't do well five with it, pull that out, you're gonna have to turn around and see if you get that online and start planning well five. So that's why we're keeping well five with this, instead of, you know, finishing one project and then turning it on and start planning the other. Let's deal with the DNR ones, let's get it all done, get it up and running. Plus. If you look down at table eight, if you take out wells one, two, which we've had some issues with it, they are old wells, if we have to pull them out. We don't need the requirement with just well four, we have to be well five. So so that kind of gives you some dates, the dates on that right under the notes, that's the date to start planning. And they're estimating about four years to plan to get things up and running. So like under that, table seven. With the second column says, you're adding well five, you're projecting, you know, date beginning twenty-nine, repeat the planning date, then four years to plan, anxiety constructed. Up at twenty thirty-three, so. That's why we're proposing well number five as part of this project. The other thing that they've done with this number to project, they're assuming that wells four, five, six, seven, we get five hundred gallons per day. But we drill that well next summer, we're hoping to put it out for bids here this winter and get it drilled next year, or this late, early spring, get it drilled spring, summer. We can start monitoring, we can do the observation level, we'll know if we're gonna get five hundred gallons a day, per minute, six hundred gallons per minute, three hundred and fifty gallons. We're gonna have the observation, uh, which is gonna be able to tell us, okay, what's gonna be the drawdown in that, you know, that field, you know, those usage wells, we'll have a lot better feel for. What are we gonna get, correct, get the drawdowns? So we can revise these dates going forward and get a better idea. The other thing they use when deriving these numbers, they're assuming that the wells can operate twenty hours per day. All the well pumps are gonna pump twenty hours a day. Recommended that it's pumping once in twelve hours a day, so I can see the longer you pump, so those pumps, the harder it is on the pump. It's also for the power, they're calling that that off. So right now during the peak month, months, you know, the summer, the city is currently pumping between twelve up to sixteen hours a day. Or then pumping close to sixteen hours a day, they're seeing a drawdown on that. It doesn't bounce back in a little manner. So they're estimating, you know, pumping twenty hours a day for all the wells in the city, it's probably not realistic. Bill is expiation, like sixteen hours a day. So that's actually, you know, short enough that time period too, if you have to pump as much out. So instead of the twenty thirty-three. The well five, if you're looking at twenty thirty, twenty twenty-nine, and so we call it well four, if you're not in twenty twenty-eight. It makes sense to do well five as part of that project.
I can give you a little history back, I think it was about two thousand ten, when I was in North Liberty, North Liberty was growing at a rate. Exponentially so fast, there was no way they could keep up. And the water supply, their current capacity. Was below what they were capable of their growth. The DNR commanded, put a guard door in on all building permits to the city. And that lasted for almost nine months, anything, until they could show a plan how they're gonna get more water. But they said, if you can't do that, you're indefinitely, you're stagnant, you cannot grow no more. They have that, they have done that. And North Liberty in nine months got a water tower up and more wells drilled, record time, got out of it. They were growing, but. So if you choose not to do anything, at some point you are gonna hit that target and you're gonna have to stop growing. Or you're gonna have to find water from some other source.
That's not just stop going, or if I end up here afterwards. I also doesn't like that option that, but.
Shane, are you aware of the bill infrastructure grants that might be available for this type of project?
So at the back of the report, there's some funding information in there. So if you go to page twenty-one. At the top of that, they they give an average, um, city, the city cost, so I believe it's based on the city's rate. The average they use is four thousand gallons per day per user there. And I think that's kind of a, for these planning purposes, it's kind of a state mandated number. I don't. I don't know what the city of Fairfax's average daily usage rate is, if it's close to four thousand or not, but. But those rates, it's my understanding, those rates are the city of Fairfax's current rates.
Yeah.
And they do have a miscalculation in there. I think that number is actually. Thirty dollars and thirteen cents per month, so three hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-six, fifty-six cents per year before tax and then after tax, you'd be like thirty-one ninety-four. Per month and three eighty-three point two eight per year. So then the rest of this section goes through different potential, potential funding sources and. There's some things like, like the city, they talk about the bipartisan, bipartisan infrastructure bill, or infrastructure law bill, the B I L loan forgiveness. The city is eligible for that. The exact amount, the city for this project, since it's a big project, it's either, I think it's thirty-five percent or two million dollars, whatever's the last round. Over fourteen to fifteen million dollars, it's gonna be two million dollars. So the city is eligible for two million dollars. Loan forgiveness for that, but that amount wouldn't be determined until the city applies and then they. They maybe out of that money. So obviously, they have a set amount in their pool, so much. And then there's so many applicants and you depend on all the applicants and the city could get two million, the city might get three, fifteen million and a half. But that's all part of that, I believe. I don't know if it's tied to the S R F, I think it might be. There's community, community development block grants, but the city's not eligible for that. There's also USDA rural development loans, grants, that the city may be eligible for. Typically, the cities that ISG has worked with do not combine those, they usually go S R F. Or they go, um, the rural development grants. With the rural development grants, um, loans and grants. There's some, some other communities, they won't be there. And if you look at that table, maybe on the next page. Yeah, that kind of breaks down the different grants and the amounts that the city, you know, will see in the average user based on four thousand gallons per day. So that second column from the right would be in addition to that number on the other table. So if that number on the other table is thirty dollars, thirty-one dollars per month. That number would be added to it. So, you know, in that scenario, if, you know, the city. With the S R F twenty-year, and then they got a two million dollar bill on forgiveness. You know, the average user at four thousand gallons per day would have fifty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents on top of their existing bill. So if you go out by, let's see, that's. So those are kind of the different funding options. And now obviously, those are looking at. I think that thirteen point five million, not the fifteen million dollar number. It's also looking at current interest rates. The city actually applies, so I'm saying, well, hopefully they're going back down from where they're at now. Two to three years out before applying for those. But it gives you kind of an idea of what we're looking at. You know, hopefully get more users online as well. And double the number of users in the next three, four years, but. So. So that kind of breaks down the different funding opportunities. And typically, S R F is the most common. And the other option is probably the USDA rural development. Moment, which that number is cheaper to look in that table, but that's, that number is typically a four-year loan. So the city would actually be, and the users would actually pay more long-term. It's just they'd be paying a lower rate. Any questions with that? So on the last page, on the last page, basically, the body of the document, page twenty-five is plenary schedule. So on that, they have the well four schedule, which we're in the process of. And you see we're open to get drilled next summer, we're open bids this spring. For this, uh, plenary engineering board for the treatment, well number five, that'd be the column on the right. They did leave off a few items on the bottom, you know, for the treatment. So, um, but basically, you know, this is this September, this month, they've submitted their draft to the plenary engineering board, that's what we're going over. Um, they've submit final copy there in October to the DNR. In December, we submit the I U P, receive DNR comments back on the plenary engineering report. January twenty-four, submit the planning and development loan for the treatment design, along with super well number five design. March twenty twenty-four, um, we submit the well number four I U P. And we receive back an environmental review. August of twenty twenty-four, we begin the plenary design for the well and the treatment facilities. March twenty twenty-five, we start the final design. In July, we submit treatment, the treatment and well number five construction to that application to the I U N R. In November of twenty twenty-five, hopefully, all this continuing on, the DNR getting stuff back to us, you know, energy process, support commits. November of two thousand twenty-five, we did the I U N R comments, construction permit. December twenty twenty-five, January twenty twenty-six, we project out of point five. And then they anticipate two plus years of construction. Right now, what they're seeing is over eighteen months for materials. Will be time on materials and supplies, so.
So you're saying five to six years out where this is completely.
Yep. So we'll go online until fall twenty twenty-eight is what the engine's been scheduled.
And a whole lot can go south in five to six years. So like I said, I I understand it's a lot of money. So I guess the first question you have to ask is, you want to continue your growth. But ultimately, is your question, whether you want to, you know, answer. If the answer is yes. You gotta find a way to provide the water, or provide it yourself, or purchase it from somewhere. So.
Shane, at what point in this schedule would a decision have to be made about well number five?
I mean, we could, we could submit the plenary engineering report in, pull that out for plenary design and final design. Here, that number is probably. Out of the fifteen million dollars point eight million, I think, in ten percent of it. So, I mean, at some stage, but.
So if you pull that out now, when the time comes, and you gotta turn around and do it again right after the treatment plant's done. You probably be looking at two and a half to three million now that well grow. So you might just double the cost.
I don't know if you double that, but it's definitely more.
Just asking one, would a decision would have to be made?
Sure, sure.
He had a chart up there, so when he used the one, wells one, two, three, and four, the trigger was point nine M G D. We just had wells one, two, and three at point nine seven, within the last two weeks. So that's what that was, well four. Granted, that was an anomaly, but that's what we did, which is the highest that we've done ever. Or already to that point, or being one well short of that number.
One other thing I would just throw out there on the ammonia issue, like I said, we have been able to manage it pretty well all this time. And I would not anticipate a problem if these guys continue to manage it. But if for some reason they could not, we had a nitrite problem. The city would be on bottom water. The water would be non-drivable, could be used for anything else, but it could not be trained. So the entire city would be on bottom water, did you solve that problem? And if you're gonna build a treatment plant to solve that problem, you're within six years out. Six years of bottom water to the city? That's really feasible. I mean, these are some of the things I just want to bring up here. Could happen, could not happen. It's kind of a worst-case scenario, but it always is a possibility. So.
Infrastructure-wise, how far away from Tine and the Cedar Rapids? I mean, how big of an investment would that be?
Well.
In a worst-case scenario, we had to.
They're, they're only, you know, per mile away. They did have a conversation with Roy Hetzmann, utilities director, and they cover the city of Robbins, and they're trying to get rid of them.
True.
They don't want to be in the business of selling water. It would be a very tough sale, and it would probably be very expensive for us. He said, if we. And even if we, they offered to take us on, they may not take us on. They're trying to get out of that business. Marine doesn't do it. Robbins is the only one that supply water to you.
I want the, they supply water, I want, no, I want the job. They do sewer dryout, they don't do water.
So they're going to make it, as Roy said.
Like a painful worse, if we did, so.
In a plain way, he's gonna make it almost impossible for them not to build their own plant.
Right.
What you, Kevin, do you know, or Cindy, do you know what Cedar Rapids water rates are at?
It's been a while since I looked at it.
But what they would do, if they did it, their structure would be, they'd have a feeder at the location feeding the city. They would sell us the water at wholesale price. Then flushing hydrants, flushing valves, all that water is being paid for. So. Users would have to make up the range difference, at least whatever it is to cover their usage, plus the city's usage for flushing. And all that at the same time. So Cedar Rapids gets every dollar per gallon. And Robbins, right now, that's not how that works. So that's why they're trying to change all that.
Well, I know they supply, or they treat the sewer for payload, and I know they raise the rates whenever they choose.
Four or six months.
Yeah.
They raise, Halo's got pretty high water, sewer rates.
Yeah.
And if there's your question in terms of a short-term solution in an emergency or.
That's, I mean, like an emergency situation. It's even feasible. But to your point, they might not allow us to anyway.
You, you could probably get it done within less than a year of timeframe of negotiations and getting the infrastructure replaced. Probably wouldn't take that long. They're, they're just down the street right across one fifty-one into development from us. So it'd be a core line underneath the highway and they'd be connected. So, other than this, they are close.
They're just up on the east side.
Tying it over across Beverly, they're down low over there.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
Those condos over there.
We need to build that nice big plant where, you know, and go and hide with them.
It's like Spain. They're doing an addition there.
Oh, it's an addition. I know, that's been there for, for years.
The reality is, is we're already four years behind schedule. By the time they're built, we'll be ten years behind schedule.
I just curious, continue to see what is.
We know well one and two are on their last legs and approaching, where's, well, one is fifty-nine, so what's the math on that? Seventy years old. We know well one and two are on their last legs and approaching, where's well one is fifty-nine, so let's math on that, seventy years old. I think we all know I hate spending twenty-four that they want here, but I also realize we need water, and we're already like I said, you're four behind, and we all knew this coming out, the price tag is significantly higher than what we initially thought, but that includes Vanderbelt, I think under the highway, wells four, five, and the treatment center. That's roughly all together, it is higher than, but putting all that together, it's not out of the ballpark, but when we were looking at our capital improvement projects, all those numbers were smaller because it wasn't grouped together. And roughly, as far as growth goes, you have the annexation on the table in the state right now, so you obviously want growth. Yeah.
Shane, does the fifteen include well four?
No, well four is a billion.
Right, right.
That's all, I think that's all that's added for us, as I said. We had the art block.
Eight hundred or so.
Right. Right, the rest of it has.
So clarifies me, what is all in fifteen?
Fifteen.
Vanderbelt, cross one fifty-one, treat the facility, and then it starts to get there. Well, five.
What do you say, Shane?
You mean church.
I mean, church street, sorry, that would need to be done to.
The sewer.
No, just the sewer portion. It is not that complete reconstruction of church street.
Oh, no.
No, just the utility.
Just the infrastructure part.
The sewer part of it, yeah, so for for water, or so to connect the treatment facilities, what we're looking at, will we connect the treatment facility into the existing water supply system? Is we run it along the whole road as part of that belt after planning. We tie into the water that will pour underneath highway one, or not, the other side of there, we we pump water, twelve inch water, we back behind, there you go. Lots on the west side of the highway, and tie back under the highway, and tie into that twelve inch that we run up the highway as part of the water storage tank project. And so Brian and Kevin and I talked about, she pours all that water, treatments, right into the ground storage tank, you have a right shot to it. So obviously, we can't, just like we can't project, you know, with that gum, I just feel like once we build a well, I'm telling you, we can't project these ammonia numbers, but if we can take, treat all that ammonia, that can do treatment facilities, put it right in that pump house, get wells one and two offline. We still have some ammonia, some ammonia issues at well three, but those are, you know, we're going to be about a third of what those issues are once well's plan is gone. Think, you know, just this process is going to help that. It guarantees that well three, from stormy, we have to treat it. I think the system's going to help, you know, once we have wells one, five, gives the city that opportunity to take both lines offline. But one, it's, you know, it was all too personal, I had to pick a number. They definitely provide the city some options, issue, your treatment, which is the condition to water supply.
Just clarification for the projects. Well, four, we've got the five hundred and fifteen thousand zero percent signing and development S R F right now, that we planned in it. We've got our four hundred and twenty-seven thousand in ARCA fund set aside, in Lynn County's four hundred and twenty-five thousand commitment to us. And then we'd have to bond for whatever would be, for well four.
Last time we checked, that was what, like, the total was like, what was it, point two or point five?
I was thinking one three, yeah.
Yeah. So it's close.
There's still a fortune, but it's not part of that fifteen.
Right.
That's what I wanted to be sure.
Yeah.
What happens if we drill those other wells and we have proper the radium? Is there ways to treat that at all?
Yes, there is, and part of this part of my conversation with I S G was that if we did have a radium property, so they they process over this H M O, it's hydrant magnesium oxide powder that you mix up, and it combines with the radium, and it's built it down. So it goes to the waste water plant, so all this is simply the injection port into the system and tankage. Radium can be treated very easily. So the ammonia needs real estate to treat, it needs space, square footage, surface area. So that's a problem.
So you inject it, it's active, it's like a polymer, combining it, filter it out.
Yeah, combines the H, the magnesium combines with the radium. And if you have iron in our stick, actually, our stick combines with iron, so it can be built it out, but we have no magnesium in our system. So if we had natural high magnesium and and radium, it would combine and we'd get it built it out, but we don't, so we have to add something. But I would, and hopefully, look at the numbers, the radium on well three was like point five two. I'm hoping if we go deep again, the radium's going to be low, and we won't even have that issue.
Is that what it traditionally is, deeper is less ammonia, less radium, more iron?
The radium is, if you think of in the aquifer, the radium is usually at the topper level of the bedrock, and when you expose that lower the aquifer down, exposes that bedrock, and then the water comes back up into it, the radium is kind of released. And that's why we had higher radium that year, then we threw so much out of the aquifer. And then that winter, we got to get, because flooded back up. Get get a, got concentrated back in the upper part of the, the aquifer, and then we took samples, and it's like, all right, time to test. Yeah, was, that test room, we're back on three year quarter testing now, so which is good, but that's basically imagine how it works, but the treatment take would be very simple.
Shane, this is just a discussion topic for tonight. Looking at the schedule, is there any action needed, it doesn't look like it's going to be summer, do you?
Yeah, I don't think so, I mean, is is there any concerns with the, you know, with I S G submitting this to the V N R? It doesn't commit the city to doing the project, it just puts it in the system and gets it started, so then if when you're ready, you need that preliminary engineer report. Can't just go below fifteen, not my, our facility without having a preliminary engineer, or just my, you know, the project isn't like, that's the base system for the preliminary engineer. But I mean, you decide to want to buy it for six months or a year, or whatever. Long, we. Fortunately, we've got a shock of the price tag, but it's, I'd rather get it done before we're forced to do something. I hate to use the D N R because of chemical, or because of contamination.
I hate swallowing a fifteen million dollar bill, don't you, or I hate one, swallowing shitty water.
So it sounds like a couple. I think that was a, keep going, just keep going.
So Joey answers, well, but we don't even give any action, I think, just discussion, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah. If you have any concern for this, submit it to the arm, that is now a wall, and if you have a question, Kevin or myself, I'll tell them here. It's a real exciting meeting if you have a very detailed question about treatment process.
I I will make a comment that I S G finally the process that they laid out is finally what I had laid out in the very beginning. They went back to this several biological filtration and right down the line, so I had laid it so off before we started the conversation with I S G. I had plans out, so everybody wanted to do something different, but ultimately, they've come back to where, yeah, this is actually the most simplest, probably the most economical form of treatment we've given, we did our own, really, in front of one million. And it's, our own doesn't solve the problem. So.
Hey Shane, thank you for that. Uh, we'll move on now to number twenty-three, there's several resolutions on here, this is the Ron Hilton utility extension, Shane, want to give us an overview on all of these things before we talk about?
Yeah, so, so the a few months back, I think it was in the spring, uh, one of Ron's buildings, he's got two buildings up there on the north side of the highway, and their subject failed, so needs to get hooked up to the city sewer. And there's not, unfortunately, there's not a sewer right on part of them, but we do have, recall, we did that, that trump main extended up to Harlan Heights, and so that's one mile over. They have to bring it up past or through the front part of advanced traffic slot, on the Wise Con property, serves Ron Hilton's two lots. So they submitted plans and easements to get that sewer brought up to his property, and that's what these documents are for. Yeah, so the first item on there is resolution for sanitary sewer plan improvements, and city staff and I have looked it over and have a few comments for the engineer, they've got them revised, and they look like, you know, they look, they appear to be in order with city standards. We recommend that.
Would like the city one of them increase eight inch, ten inch, the sewer length?
They had proposed ten, to a ten inch, because when their engineer reached out for some information, he said, you know, we're going to sum that up, ultimately, it needs to be extended up to service, uh, on the hole in the field, you know. West of eighty street, from north of highway one, they actually would service that property where that, um, market fresh, whatever, that IV grocery store, composed a year, I don't know, eighteen months ago, um, on the northeast corner, maybe, so it would service all of that area, that's a hundred and thirty year career, so. So, yeah, there, and that's something we're going to discuss right later on, is the ten inch versus eight inch.
Shane, for disclarification purposes, the cost of all of these constructions is being bought by Ron Hilton.
Correct, that's correct, yeah, it's not a city project, it's a private project, but it is a public sewer, and a little bit of that will touch base on that eight inch versus ten inch year later on.
Then will he get a tapping fee when people hook up, is that what we discussed?
Yeah, I think there's an agenda on there as well.
And then all, the placement of all this stuff is in easements where it won't be affected by the bridge project or the realignment of that intersection?
Yes, um, they are posing, there's, there's, they're tying into the big manhole. If, I don't know how often anything did get to that part of town, but, you know, you get off the highway on West Cemetery Road, and then there's a driveway that heads north, there's advanced traffic, and then on Hilton, we will work up to Samoski's got, you know, the Betty Boos, and there's the East Wall, my driver, or whatever it is, up there. So they tie into that manhole, they extend a section of, I put in a sanitary manhole, and then extend up through the front of Ron Hilton's properties into the manhole, and end it there, and then edge of this property. That first manhole is in line with our supposed drive coming in from realigned West Cemetery Road up to tie in East View, recall that way out. So, they, we, we asked that minimum elevation, we set at our preliminary design, we haven't designed that yet, but what we anticipate that will be, plus it's up above the ditch elevation, so if anything gets flooding, you know, for going down manhole. So when we do our project, we may have to tweak that minimum elevation, but that's the only thing that comes into play. We've been planning, when we did that trump main up to Harlan Heights, we put a ten inch dug in that manhole, assuming that we brought a line up there, ultimately, serve those properties, serve your parent, parents property, if one of the avenues sewer, and then on, on the bonus property, and then property, so, so all of that's been planned, it's it's in mind, but, you know, cities longer, and I was for this. Any other questions, the plan improvements?
So that's item A, the sewer.
Yep, that's my understanding, it's all on.
So, um, you motion to adopt the resolution to approve the sanitary sewer plan improvements?
Motion.
Okay, roll call, starting to talk.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, moving on to item number B, Shane, if you want to talk about the easements?
Yeah, so this is for a temporary construction easement on the city's property, so where that manhole is, the existing manhole, where they're tying on. I mean, that's the city property, the city purchased that, it's a triangular piece, um, back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, to extend the sewer. Um, so they're tying into there, so they obviously have to get on the city property, there's work there, and we coordinated, it's a tight space and toward, we coordinated with the owner's engineer, that if they need to store any materials or equipment, they can also do that on the city property, as long as they turn it back to its existing condition, and we see that, fix it, and stop, so. This is just temporary easement on the city property, allowing now Ron Hilton's contractor to get on the city property, connect to the sewer, and use it, and then it would vacate at the point that the city accepts the project.
So need motion to that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Roll call, please, Marion.
Aye.
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 Thank you, number C, some more easements, Shane?
Yeah, so this is a, this is a permanent easement, it's for sanitary sewer facilities, and this is across the Wise Con property, so this is advanced traffic property, so this just allows, um, it really doesn't come into play until, you know, Ron Hilton yeah, coordinated, obviously, with Wise Con to pursue in front of his property, but once the city ownership of that, once he puts it in, and the city accepts it, then it's the city sewer facility, so then we want this easement in place, so the city can get on there, maintain it, repair it, and place it as needed. So it's a permanent sanitary sewer facility easement for, um, the city sewer on Wise Con property.
Second. Roll call, please, starting to talk.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, item number D, another easement?
Yep, so this is the same thing, but it's sanitary sewer easement on Ron Hilton's property, so the portion, the south portion in front of the lot. Where the public sewer is going to cross his lots, um, it's permanent sewer easement, so it's going to be in the city, you know, and repair it, place it as needed.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Marion?
Aye.
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 Thank you, number E, connection fees and agreements with Ron Hilton.
Yeah, so there's, like I said, there's two parcels, there's parcel A and parcel B, and I'm just going to explain them both right now, we did two separate resolutions, but these are the connection fees for Ron Hilton connecting to the city sanitary sewer facilities, parcel A, and parcel B, I believe this one is parcel A. And these are based off of, the city's had two projects that the city had paid to install sewer. First one, I think it was two thousand thirteen, we extended sewer from that vest station, as you all recall, the area that town mark concerns about seventy. It was that vest station back behind the south side of the cemetery road, so we basically, under two thousand thirteen project, we updated, upgraded that vest station and extended the sanitary sewer west behind those residential lots. And that project included a lot of other stuff, but that was that portion of the project, the sanitary sewer, so there's a connection fee established with that, and then we extended to, we tied on to that vein, which was on the southwest corner, it's basically just south of where Zach Samoski lives now, that house was it then when we did it, but tied on to that, boarded underneath highway one fifty-one, and took it up to Harlan Heights with the two thousand sixteen sanitary sewer project. So those are two sewer projects done it several times, the city. The city established connection fees by resolutions from both of them. And so that's. What sanitary sewer connection fees Ron is paying for is. I don't know what's these for, so that's what these resolutions for. And. For those agreements.
And they have signed the agreements and dropped off the signed agreement and checks, we're holding them till approval tonight.
So, uh, resolution under number B is for parcel A?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Tom, start.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and then item number F is for parcel B?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Marion?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And then the final item on this project is discussion of possible motion. The city to reimburse Ron Hilton for upsizing the main from eight to ten inches.
Yeah, so. Ron Hilton's got. Couple acres, one, one, one lot is a little bit over, and you grow one last little less than a year. To service those lots, he really only needs an eight inch, that's the standard size required by the V N O. So. The city indicated he wanted, to his engineer, he wanted ten inch, want to be able to service the rest of that basins in the future when he arises. So as part of the project, you're on Hilton's, put in the ten inch, even though he doesn't need it. And as, you know, beer said, you know, he's paying for it, the city's not paying for it, so. It's my opinion, staff's opinion, other staff, that, you know, the city should reimburse him for the upside of that pipe. And then the thought would be, we establish a connection fee for, so in the future, when people. Tie onto that section and extend it to serve their property, they pay a portion connection fee. It'd just be the upside, so the connection fee be based just on what the city's paying for, and you can walk by the cost, so. That cost would be, you know, the, basically just the material cost for the different place, different place for a ten inch pipe versus an eight inch pipe. Okay, I think I had in my email, I don't know if city included that or not, but. We checked the Schimber, I don't know where they get the material from, I assume it's Schimber, they're local, but. There's one or two other places they might get it from, but. The ten inch to the eight inch for the. Trust pipe was. Hidden around nine dollars a foot, and we're talking. Hundred and sixty feet. And then, but the, uh, the other section, which they needed a different material because it's spread by their wells, it's not too far from their wells. So they need a little bit higher material, so that was like sixty dollars for a ten inch versus twenty seven dollars for. That was for like two hundred and four feet, I think. So it, it would be around seven thousand, seventy-five hundred dollars, somewhere in that range. Now, he'll have to submit the receipts, what they gave them to, that information. The city would reimburse the difference, but that was just to give you an idea based on the numbers we got from Schimber and what we might be looking at, so. It might come in sixty-five hundred, it might come in eighty-five hundred, but. Can't imagine it's gonna be a lot different than what we saw. But I'm guessing somewhere in the seventy-five hundred. Questions on that, or concerns, or? See participating on that, or?
I think that makes sense, you know, I technically ask put it in eight inch, or we're asking for ten inch, because it's a possible future for playing growth on an hour.
That sounds like a motion?
Motion.
Sounds like a second on this?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to number twenty-four. Switch gears and talk about speed limits.
Yeah, so. This is for changing the speed limit basically from seventy-six to. Depending towards to east-south view road, I believe it is. Along left view road, I think right now it's posted at fifty-five, we're recommending change it to thirty-five.
Was it from south view to seventy-six?
South.
And Bupacker Road?
Right by Traver.
Yeah.
From east-south view road?
Yeah.
Seventy-six.
West, yeah. So there's, there's two reasons, Mrs. Traver, the other, that one we're managing, hundred and seventy acres, south of Traver, we need to there. So. Assistant road, potential road through on there. And then the other part is the streetlights. That's a ditch section, a roll section. To put the streetlights in, we have to have at least from that view back to the travel lane. Has to be a reversible area. So you can't go in. You know, you can't put it on the ditch. Like one, these streetlights are right up, number two. You can't, once the car goes off the road on those ditches, which are about two and a half, three and a half, or ones you can't recover, but so you're gonna go down, you're gonna hit the hole, so. To meet the recoverable distances and the offset distances, the thirty-five mile, you sign speed as appropriate in there.
When are we making those improvements? People are gonna scream about this. The speed limit change. Just gonna tell you.
Well, that's why we got three readings.
I mean, I could see why it's necessary, but until they actually make the improvements and stuff, I don't.
So I do, wouldn't you like going fifty-five once they get out of town?
Well, number twenty-five is to prioritize the installation. Do you have a timeframe, Shane?
Yeah, I guess that's my question.
Yeah. I mean, they'll do it right away then. You do this and number twenty-five.
So what?
City doesn't want to change the speed limit, then.
And we're just putting light poles in, in. Before they develop that property, that what we're doing.
The Traver property is.
Can we borrow the money to do it? Two bonds, three bonds ago?
Yeah. And this light poles in front of Traver, it's actually one. In from the driveway parking lot at the complex, the southeast parking lot, and then there's for one. Here the Culver, that's the triple box cover that we put in, and then there's two from the. So that's, it's all like it's, we reckon that two by Traver or breakaway. Cause there, instead of fourteen and a half, that offset the twelve and a half that offsets.
So then, if that's the case, if they just run up to the edge of the Traver property at this point, then why don't we just change the speed limit there? Why are we going all the way up to seventy-six?
Speed limit, once you get north of. East-south view road is, it's posted at twenty-five. Before you get to the tracks, between the railroad tracks and east-south view road, there's just even if you had to run to twenty-five miles. So we're looking to change it from seventy-six if you had more than thirty-five. Seems kinda strange, there's no traffic down there, it's gonna be thirty-five mile an hour, there's a lot of traffic out here. It's kinda backwards.
Yeah, what day, what time of day? Sometimes seventy-five.
Yeah, exactly. He said this, the streetlights are necessary. It's good to have your streets lit up, especially as you get, you get more traffic.
I couldn't hear your input on the setbacks.
The setbacks, the desirable is fourteen and a half foot, the. I can end it is. Tram, yeah, they get some documents, we submit it, the official chart shows based on the, the design speeds. And. So fourteen and a half foot clear for the travel, so you work from the baited edge, you got fourteen and a half feet. At home. Distance they will be allowing to travel there.
For thirty-five for what?
North of thirty-five.
For thirty-five?
Yeah. The, we're putting them on the north side of the, the south drive of Traver, and the north side of the north drive of Traver. Here on block twelve and a half feet, you go a little bit further, depend on exactly where you locate it, cause it got a bit of color there. But if you go too far out, you get into that ditch where it drops off.
So the last, the, the light on the south end is at the north side, right on the north side of Traver's drive?
Yeah, there's one on the, so Traver's got three drives. One in the middle, one in the south, one in the north. So. So. We're putting one on the north side of the south drive, and one on the north side of the north drive.
And then, didn't you say that it was four holes?
And so then, the other two, there's one on, because north side of the triple box Culver, the east side of the road.
That's that one?
It's all on the same line, same road.
So I guess my question is, why do we have to go thirty-five at seventy-six, why can't we kind of go to thirty-five until we get up to the, where the lights are?
Cause you couldn't, why? Overran to down to seventy-six, so that's full of that one.
I'm just. I don't want it to be thirty-five through there, but I'll have to.
I don't.
Yeah, is it a picture?
I get the safety issue, but that's my, that's my question.
That's my question. Say that again?
It's on the south side of Traver, is in there a discussion on possible development on the south side there?
Well, tomorrow we have the annexation, annex that property on the south side of Traver.
Yep, so maybe the lines could go, which actually, yeah.
Yeah, maybe the next two or three years, or maybe go to here, right now.
But then, let's not change the speed limit for two or three years until that happens.
Do it, yeah.
Well, I mean, this makes sense to, like Shane said, the light pole, if the lights are there, then let's make the speed limit effective where light poles are and leave. The stuff that's still not developed, and then when we add the light poles for the next phase, then let's shift the speed limit then. I get what you're saying, but I don't.
Another consideration is, if you want to change the speed limit and, you know, maybe you just put light poles to, you know, the two more light poles. Black's Culver and then at the city park, you stop light poles. Not opposed to that, but if you're such a concern about the speed limit. So you're willing to change the speed limit, then you're gonna let the light pole. That's something to consider. I mean, it's, yeah, it's how fast you drive and how much light you have up there. When you put them in, when you change.
So the ordinance on the table is changing the speed limit to thirty-five. Starting at seventy-sixth Avenue going north.
So if you're deep of Google map. It's gonna take you about an extra ten seconds, I just do math, right about half mile.
She was just gonna have everyone join what they want?
If you, if you wanted to, yeah.
I just saying, no one's gonna follow that.
Speed limits are suggestions, not requirements, they are. But.
They're wrong.
No, they're just suggestions by engineers.
I just made this to be a creation to me, cause I, I would think that's, in all sincerity, if we want to wait for the one. One, um, passing and wait to see the feedback, yes, I agree, I mean, I, I'm the same player. Once you get past south, you would. Frank it up, but. In reality, yeah, it sounds like a lot, what's ten more seconds on your drive? We get to go back. There's plenty of digits.
It's a lot of training everybody too, it's like Eighty, or Eighty Street, I mean.
Uh, they've been pulling people over all day, or for the last two days.
Are they?
Yeah.
Well, they have.
In front of our shop.
For what, three or four weeks?
Yeah, I think it's this morning and yesterday morning. Front of our shop and then kind of down south, they probably pull over, just want to pay attention.
Traver is just so well lit, you can see, it's like a Christmas tree out there, you can see for miles.
I can see it on Wright Brothers coming home.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's really well lit, so it's not like, I feel like it's a concern that we can't see, but. If, if we've got the money budgeted and want to do it, I would say go to the edge of their lot, but. Just increase that somewhere a little back.
When we're seventy-six, then.
That's about a half mile down, yeah. But you're also factoring, I, I never remember their city names, but Urjon or Enjion or whatever.
Yeah.
Is going in just south of there's what?
Well, they are talking about not taking that lot, um, taking the one on the other end, so they wouldn't be in that corner, that wouldn't be developed.
I don't know, but.
No, they're, but they have come to it as a.
I don't know, but it wouldn't, you're probably probably double that.
One second question?
Distance.
The distance there, there, right.
It's a quarter mile, Traver's say, um, the south side of Traver's say down to the seventy-sixth.
We got lots to do, that's. We got lots to do yet, no more.
So. The choices are. You can make a motion to, uh, approve the first reading of the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, starting at seventy-sixth and going north. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Or do you want to change it to? Change the property, I don't care.
Can we change this? I don't know.
Ran back next month?
Yeah, you can change it.
We table it.
We, we can change it to second reading, we can, we can read, you can change language.
Well, you could change language right now.
Yeah.
First reading, how you want to read it.
Maybe, maybe I don't.
Yeah, that's. But if you do the first reading, then you change the language, then you gotta go back on first reading. But you could change however you want it to read now, before you do the first reading.
Well, I'm just, it sounds like people are probably favorite going from the corner and then expanding later. Just let it die a sec, like a second. You want to change it to the. What is that, edge of the?
How are we gonna word that in the ordinance, but?
We can call like quarter-quarter section if you want. So that's the south, the south edge of Traver's quarter-quarter section.
Something would have a more majority agreement on that versus seventy-six.
And we can do a quarter mile, that's fine.
Traver's.
So, I, I amend my motion to the southern edge of Traver's property.
Okay, so that's the motion?
I'll second that.
Second? On the first reading, um, all in favor?
I have a question, are we approving the other two locations as well, or is it just for this?
This is the speed limit.
Those are current, ones that are already there. They're just listed as the thirty-five mile an hour zone.
Yeah, they, yeah, it's just amending that.
Adding that one, right?
It's just replacing the section.
Okay.
Adding the. Yeah.
Okay, so this is an ordinance, so we need a roll call, please, Marion? Aye.
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 Okay, so the first reading has been approved as amended. Now, do you want to consider a motion to suspend the rules?
No, no.
So we'll not, we got there, let's.
Yeah.
Mary Ann looks a lot of forty-five every time.
Twenty, people are gonna be like, what is, what is this?
People are gonna get, what are you doing?
What are you changing things?
Yeah, people are gonna be like, you're losing your mind.
So speaking of streetlights, number twenty-five specifically addressed the street license acts.
So I recommend tabling this in case that ordinance doesn't, I get passed, we're gonna learn to tell a line for the lights.
Right.
Yep.
Good suggestion, so item twenty, we need a motion to table them, so.
Yeah, just not take any action.
Can I ask you? Can I ask you a question on that, is it just the two poles that propose a breakaway if this goes through? Any other one would be wooden? The other two? Okay. But those, there was two down there that were, that codes expired also.
Yeah, I mean, we wait another two to three months and maybe clear aside with the.
Yeah.
Whether or not, maybe come back to it different.
Things usually don't go by sort of.
Okay, so no action in number twenty-five. Okay, so we'll move on to twenty-six. Special possible motion concerning Kevin's retirement and having his replacement. Try as we might, you have not been able to get Kevin to change his mind, so. What has been happening so far is Kevin, Brian and Lynn have reviewed the job description and made some updates, and we've got that. In the packet. We've also had some email conversations and also some in-person conversations about some other things. Related to the job description, we did add the reports too. In addition to their claim tuning the job descriptions. Role and goal here, it looks like we're looking for November fourteenth. Council approval of a replacement, so everything else has to happen in between. So one of the outstanding items is. So one of the outstanding items is when you want to post it and where we want to post it. So I'm suggesting that since we still have time, that we post it in the October fax. And then there's three standard places that we post, and then the council discussion is whether you want to go further than that. For example, put it in the newspaper, put it on, um.
Well, what's our three standard postings? Definitely newspapers, one, right?
The required, no, the three required are City Hall, the library and the host office. And the Iowa code requires us to post it at those three places for ten days for the veterans' breakfast.
It doesn't matter to me.
So that's.
How do we do it with Kevin? I'll just follow.
We'd react such a big dish that way.
I'll be in a moment.
How did you find out about the job, Kevin? We would have put it in the paper at that time.
Yeah, I was actually, somebody else had seen this, a contractor, and had approached me and told me that they were looking. So I didn't actually see it myself, because I wasn't looking at that site.
I would just say whatever our process for that was, just for continuity.
Well, are you looking for candidates, or are you looking to hire the candidate that you've been training for the last four years?
I'm just saying it's just to be open with the whole process.
Right.
Exactly, yeah. I mean, if you're looking for somebody other than Brian, I don't need to go statewide, that's where you're gonna have to go to find somebody. Seriously.
Sure. I'm just saying policy and policies we had before in Larry. No one can complain about that, yeah.
That would be the fax, the three required, the three required in the newspaper. I think we usually, I usually ask them if they have a package, and it's like, maybe run it a week or set ten days if they have a special. And then if you put it in the newspaper, I think you get it on there, um, online also.
Agreed, very good. Um, just a, a comment, the ten days seems like a pretty short, and I'm, I'm not saying just to change it just for this position, but overall, anytime we hire, ten days seem kind of short, but, but do talk about that.
Is that normally what our job postings are for, ten days?
Ten days, yeah.
And we've had to extend them sometimes when we haven't gotten a good result.
Yeah.
I don't really see, you need to change it, we just send it back out again if we, I'm not talking about discount, I'm talking in general, you know, if we have an issue.
That's what we've done in the past.
Yeah.
Are we on a round of bad applicants?
Yeah, I'm just scraping the bottom of the barrel, I wouldn't have been.
A couple other things that were kind of kicked around, but then we didn't reach any conclusion, was whether the, the posting should indicate anything about the salary. So that people don't apply if they're wanting something twice as much as what we're thinking, or didn't reach any conclusion on that, we just discussed it internally. So thoughts on that? Have we posted that in the past?
No. What we have, what it says is compensation will be based on experience. Our application, which they have to fill out, does ask them what they're currently making and asks what they anticipate, so we get a little feedback. And that's typically kind of one of the first things the hiring committee looks at, was kind of to weed them out. At the staff meeting, we talked about, Kevin and I, I think, give input on, you know, you get somebody with the qualifications right out of Kirkwood, they're gonna be a different paid grade than somebody that comes with twenty years of experience, or somebody like Brian that's been with our system for eight years, eight years and, and has a bunch of other skills. You know, those are gonna be three vastly different people to look at, and we talked about, you know, if you set a range, and then you find the perfect person, and they want a dollar more, you don't have to stay within the range, well, if they, they go in knowing they want a dollar more, they might not apply. You know, I, you know, it's just, there's pros and cons, yeah, no matter how, yeah.
I would lean away from posting the salary primarily because, exactly, it's, it's open to negotiation if a one. Two, by letting them put what they think they should be paid, that gives us an idea of what they're looking for, and I don't want people in the applications. Wait, smile on it, Joe.
I'm not smiling at anything, excuse me.
Smile at it, seriously.
Shit, no.
Like, uh, but yeah, I think it's worth it on the hiring committee side, but it's, it's worth, I'm both seeing what they get paid, what they're thinking it might be, and then also I don't want to put the dollar amount there to scare someone away in case they might change, we might change our mind as a committee when they come in, ask them what they think, and they might never show up, we have a dollar amount there. And then two, um, I don't want someone, I want someone who wants to work here, not someone who thinks you make dollar amount, they're just gonna wait for the next opportunity to come along that has the higher dollar amount. I think we already have a team, but like someone said, I don't.
Well, they probably, they can't apply if they aren't qualified, and if they're qualified, they certainly would know what the wage.
Yeah.
Well, I think Cynthia and I were talking, somebody in that position is gonna be at home before they apply.
Other particular positions, yeah.
They're gonna know what the big range, they're gonna know what currently the big range is, they're gonna know everything about the job, if they're, they're gonna do that one more.
The other thing that I had brought up, just in observing what other cities have done, was the possibility of starting to look at department heads being salaried. But Cynthia had gotten some information from a league of cities that included in the packet there, and one thing that kind of jumped out at me is it indicated to be a salary position that you need to supervise at least two people, so that eliminates this position, so.
Well, that's, that's a little wrong. You can still be salaried, but you're not exempt to overtime, even if you are salaried.
Okay. Okay, so there's a difference there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, so on the hiring committee, um, Nick has indicated that he could join the hiring committee on this round. However, since his work schedule sometimes, um, changes or is demanding, would like another council member as a backup, please.
I'll be a backup.
As in case I can't do it in the timeframe that we needed it. Okay, and then the other members of the hiring committee, um, because it is a department head position, then I'm gonna include myself, Cynthia, Kevin and Lynn. Okay?
So when, uh, do we wanna open taking applications through, you know, if our end date that we want to have a recommendation ready is November fourteenth? And we're gonna, the earliest, we're gonna start tomorrow, uh, it'll be in the fax by the end of September. Do we wanna accept until mid-October, and then give us a month to get one or two interviews done, or do we need less time? Do we go third week in October?
I think a month is more than enough, because this isn't a entry level position, I think you're gonna have a smaller candidate pool than, you know, or just bringing on someone, starting at the grad level.
Well, one of the new fears about, when do you want to start the?
Well, I mean, if we're making a recommendation at the November, what, fourteenth meeting?
Then we would.
I would say as soon as the recommendation is made, and have some overlap so they can, you know, again, again.
Yeah. Depending on their availability.
Their availability, and you never put in, there are two weeks or write seat rights, Kevin, um, you know, handover and things like that.
So do you want to go to the third week in October to accept apps, so that we have three weeks, or you want to leave it at mid-month, mid-month?
I'd say Brian, mid-month, mid-month.
Okay.
Anything else that we need to?
Did you want to discuss the residency?
Oh, another thing I had brought up was, um, in some cases where a person could be involved with resolving an emergency, there might be a requirement in the position to, um, live within so many miles of the city, or even become a resident of the city, but I think we kind of backed down on becoming a resident, but opinions, I guess, on whether we should state that the person needs to live within certain radius of the city to be able to respond to emergencies quickly?
What do you think, Kevin?
I would never have came, I wouldn't have took the job, I wouldn't have moved.
If you had to live here?
Would you? Even in time restraint, I, I wouldn't have moved. And I can almost guarantee that most any grade three or four in the state that is already fixed will not move, unless it is so enticing that they couldn't refuse, but no small community can do that.
Have their mind issues, you're out in Mount Vernon area, right?
Mount Vernon hired one from El Cator because there were none to be had for about two years, till he left.
And, but you live in Mount Vernon, so twenty minutes away.
Mount Vernon, yeah.
It's that's the one.
Yeah, but.
And is that an issue for emergencies, I mean, on your experience?
No, because one of the things, everybody's cross street, everybody here can handle the same emergency, no matter what it is. We have done that to ensure that somebody close to the end is always available to take care of the problem. And if they're started, I'll take care of the problem, I'm on my way, yeah, so we've already got something started way ahead of time. It's just, most communities, when you're looking for somebody at this level, you, unfortunately, you can't put too many restraints on it. You just, you know, get the cool people you're looking for.
We had a resident requirements thing with the party.
Yeah, but most of our.
As much as I would pay, you know.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I would rather, I would, uh.
Well, some of our city staff.
Yeah, authority staff.
Yeah, authority of our staff, we had a resident.
I, I understand, you know, the concern about, um, distance and travel, but I don't see, apparently it hasn't, this area was cross trained, something that can't stopgap until whoever our land operator is arrives.
So, just food for thought on all of these things, since it's not very often that we have a department head change, so. So very good, anything else that we had opened, Cynthia, I think that was it.
I think that was it.
And so, the motion would be, for what at this point?
To.
So is this approval of Kevin's retirement?
Oh, right, yeah, no, we approved him retiring.
No?
Um, to post, um, the position, uh, through, and I'm writing, mid-October, um, hiring committee, the bulk, alternate daily mayor, myself, Kevin and Lynn, and, uh, to have a recommendation ready by November fourteenth, if possible. Okay, accurate. And a motion?
Motion's that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, thank you. And then the next item, twenty seven, is to approve the revised job description for this position. Again, Kevin, Brian and Lynn went through it. Oh, here comes Brian.
I'm just going for the next one.
Oh, you're going for the next one, you just stretched, yeah.
Yeah, I worked on this job description, but I also got intentions on working on the rest of it, there's some questions on, um, how do you, to upgrade your position within the city? We have, uh, public works one, public works two, it's never been addressed as far as, since I've been here. I was hired as a public works two, I had no idea what it meant at the time, and everybody else is a public works one, questions coming up, well, what do I do? Public works two, so I've been doing some chicken scratches, whatnot, checking on with an idea of where, maybe a starting wage would be for each position, maybe like the time to be here before you get upgraded, what it takes to upgrade, and I'm kind of hoping that might be some deciding factor for the future job descriptions for the rest of the positions, so. Still working on that, but that one will come up again, because then, whatever happens with, whether if it's a new person, it won't happen, but if it's a shift of positions, I'm just gonna have another spot open, and we'll address that in the timeframe.
Right, we're looking at the big picture, and that potentially will have a domino effect, and other things will shift, so Brian's been doing, um, some work on that, and nothing to be decided tonight on that, but except for the revised job description for what are we supervisor supervisor. Any questions on that? Yes, Matt, um, need a motion to adopt this resolution?
Motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please, Brian?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Number twenty eight, proposal from Crexner Construction for Cleveland.
So back, I guess in December, January, we got, uh, some preliminary numbers on per foot price, there's some black sanding on the streets. Crexner was the lower price, so he had them come in and do some investigating, getting a little prices, uh, several places around town. His recommendation is to go with item number two on the second page, and those are all concrete streets, and the amount totals, eleven thousand five hundred seventeen forty five. And that's his recommendation for what he has money available to do such work.
So it's in the budget for that?
I think, yes, yeah, yeah.
Are those, the, the measurements on those streets, accurate? In the first, first page, that looks way off, I mean, I'm not sure of them, but I mean, the second, page two is the one, length, test light, those distances, okay, rate of you drive from Creekside to Second Street, seventy nine.
I must, I don't know if it's necessarily the length of the street, it might be the amount of cracks and the total fee notes, cracks, I believe, that was. This should be the linear feet of crack.
Yeah, it should be the linear feet of cracks that he's going to steal.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
Obviously, this is a small test, but that's what he said he's got available, so that's what he wanted to push forward.
Does he want to try doing a little bit of this every year then, since we have so many concrete streets?
I believe that was the intention, that it'd be dropped for a little while because of other projects, but, uh, he's got some money available this year. And now the street budget's went up a little bit, it might make it a little bit better to be able to do some every year.
Can he get to this yet this season, did he say?
I do not know that.
They just, they get to a point and they can't do it anymore?
Right, and I'm not sure what that window is, and I don't know, he didn't ever tell me if that was gonna be something that they still can fit in yet or not. I'm guessing yes, but otherwise it'll have to be, I'm sure way after April, or it's warm enough to do again.
Actually, the COVID gets more correct, there it is. We used to, yeah, we used to do a late fall winter.
Late fall winters?
That's when the cracks are a little wide, it's over.
And maybe it's maybe it's planned for, I totally don't know.
That could be.
He didn't tell me that. I don't mind with it, I'll take a motion.
There's a motion, second, all in favor?
I'll second. Aye.
For, um, Crexner, okay.
For item two, aye, aye, aye.
Item two. Okay, number twenty nine, Brian's gonna continue, it looks like, on the two thousand seven pickup.
Two thousand seven pickup is our oldest pickup. When we originally discussed the service truck, that was on the plan to get rid of it because of just replacing a vehicle with a vehicle. Um, I think what he's looking for is an opinion on your direction of what we should do with it, he's got an email on there, what he looked up at prices and whatnot. Right now, we have a spot for it in the shop for now, and part-time people could use it for a while. It's not a necessary vehicle per se, because we still have something else that can be used, it's just not as user friendly for the part-time people. Longer to be into next season, we'll have it good for the winter, the parking side of the following winter, it will not fit inside, because we'll have another truck, and all the spots will be gone.
Do you need a snowplow?
We do not need a snowplow, that is the only truck that that's going to plow, we'll work on anyway, so that's why you're suggesting get rid of it, because all the other trucks are. Because all the other trucks are wider and that one is so small that it doesn't even follow with all the other trucks, so.
I think that number's low from what I do, a lot of vehicles that total out where I work. I think in two thousand seven, I think it's in really good shape, that snowplow looks in really good shape.
The snowplow's in good shape, there's hidden rust on that truck, but it's in by the way.
And he scratched that out of the hour recording.
Yeah. It's a shame, everybody knows.
And I think, I mean, he looked at Kelly Blue Book and I look at those numbers frequently, but the way the market is right now. My suggestion would be you start at a low side of twelve, if they go up to fifteen, I have four-door sedans that are totaled out. Two thousand ten, two thousand five, um, like you can add to it, insurance is gonna pay that seven, eight thousand dollars. For a small sedan, that's like that if you've got a plow in a in a truck.
Nice.
I will say sell it as, sell it with the plow and I think you'll get a lot more ultimately.
Yeah, and I think that's the plan, I guess the question is, is do you guys have a feeling of whether you should, you should try to do this now, wait a year, or?
If you wanna move it now and it, you wanna move it and it has a plow, now is the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would say you could go on the high end, because if somebody wants to move snow for this winter, they'll be all over.
I didn't realize, I love.
No, not with that boss plow.
Well, so far, everything's been, that I know, and I don't know the other way because I'm not that person, but uh, you know, also that steel bid, which usually tends to come in way under what you're looking for. Or to find out what the other option is that we are even pursued on how to go about doing this.
Well, they can, they can set a minimum there, they can take sealed bids and if they're all under, they can reject them all.
Do you have to do a seal?
Yeah, you just, you would set a thing and take sealed bids and if it's under your amount, you don't have to take it.
Or what would your alternative be after that, or?
Well, I know there's a place that I get occasional emails from that they auction um city vehicles.
For example, Craigslist or, I don't know, something like that.
I didn't know if we were all waiting.
I I don't know.
Do we have, do we have to auction it up or can we just list the price that we want to port and put it for sale?
I think you can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you can't.
Baseball bucket boys.
Yes. Baseball bucket boys, yeah. I never think of baseball buckets.
Yeah, I think you can do it any of those ways.
Okay.
I would say, but.
But the council needs to set, if you're gonna, you know, set a price and just sell it to whoever offers that first, you're gonna have to determine there.
Right, right, so. So you wanted to be smart and turn back next month and maybe hire another number that maybe.
Between twelve and thirteen. I think that's, I think you qualify that, oh, what do you think? I think I would think so, because the new market is.
Let your middle bid go.
I mean, you guys consider.
You can't find a pickup right now.
How hard, and that's sucked up the used market and I was just talking about this, the other people were getting how many vehicles are totaled during the break show. So not only is it a nationwide problem with newer vehicles, it's sucked up the used market, locally you have a problem supplying those vehicles. So this area of the resale on used vehicles is, I don't know, twenty-five, thirty-five percent higher than normal. So I mean, if you wanted to put twelve, fifteen with a plow on it right before all of a sudden you buy a plow truck, I think that's reasonable. I'd start throwing out there at fifteen and accept fourteen, thirteen, five, maybe.
I thought you were doing a sealed bid.
Or not.
You don't have to.
I would just place, I, I mean, it's a good one, it's low miles for a little city. Yep. Let's do it.
I don't know, I think they're gonna find the, get it set there, whatever, these, uh, figured out it's a issue.
Would you make a motion to that so that we don't go sell a residential?
Oh, I would say to, so, but the starting, the driving, the circle fifteen.
What was the motion?
To set the oldest pickup with plow attachment uh at fifteen.
And second, this is whatever you just said.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
It definitely has no risk, no matter what they said earlier.
Number thirty, uh, now we're talking about a mower.
Mower, yes, uh, so he's been trying to do a mower rotation here for the last several years. Last year, we ended up bypassing that and using the money for something else. Now he's back on to want to replace one more. Uh, he's looking to replace our first Toro, which was a twenty nineteen, uh, some real old unit. We do have one unit that's older, but we don't use it as much, uh, you may even get used around the race bar shop and whatnot, so. Um, it's a little smaller, it's got less things on, so we're just looking to try and keep that oldest one. It's a different brand, Hustler, and uh replace the one of the four units that we use the most. So he had the bid in here, it looks like Wade's is the lowest bid. The Toro Z Master is what he's going after, that's what we have, all the other units are. Um, looks like they were gonna give us a trade-in, so he's uh requesting Wade's Toro Z Master six thousand for the eleven-six.
Is it fair to say that if that truck sells, goes back, goes back into the general fund, but could be used for, for the purchase of a mower?
Well, sure, it'll be money in our bank, yeah.
They're going on the main roads budget or where'd I go?
What?
Is he gonna go on the department budget or just general fund?
We're going for Wade's, we're missing that.
The sale of a snowplow.
Well, um, it depends on if we can research where they bought the truck from. It can go in the general fund, it can go in the road use fund. And then the mower can come out of the general fund or I don't.
Parts fund.
Part, part, that is general.
All about work.
Part of the startups.
So it could be washed. And it also like will.
We knew that. Do we have a motion, have we done a fight? I would say, do we have a motion to go with the Toro Z master?
I'd recommend it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Okay, so number thirty-one is to set a public hearing date for the change in the zoning code. And Chris was talking about earlier about only one primary residence per lot. So this, we're just setting the date for the public hearing, which our next council meeting is October.
Eleven, I think.
Cool, Ken?
It's right there on that paper, I can read it.
Okay. Yes, it is.
Is that wrote?
Reading this picture?
Okay, so, do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please, Tom?
Aye, aye.
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 Thank you. We have some bills to pay, are there any questions on the claims list?
Make a motion to pay the bill.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Um, opportunity for citizens not on the agenda, anybody like to speak back there? Well, okay. And moving on, number three for mayor's comments. Um, just a reminder, or if you didn't already know, tomorrow at one o'clock is the city development board. Meeting on Alliance requested annexation into Fairfax. We've had a committee for that along with committee, will be meeting here at uh City Hall and participating via Zoom, Zoom. And our annexation attorney will attend in person, he goes in point, so he'll be attending in person. Um, council members are welcome to attend as long as we don't have a quorum, so that's tomorrow at one. Thursday of of interest, ITC is an, announced the next phase of their project down. Um, by Traver, going down the Deer Road, it's an expansion project. They're having an open house out at the Hotel Kirkwood on Thursday evening. Shane has posed some questions to the representative, I don't know that we for that.
I don't know.
This Thursday? Open house?
This, this Thursday.
What time?
Five thirty to seven at Hotel Kirkwood.
Somewhere delivered in.
Tomorrow at one o'clock is the meeting, is that correct?
For the annexation.
And where's that at?
Here.
Where at, here?
Oh.
But depends how many we get, it may be up here.
Because we have, tomorrow is our speaker series.
Right.
Oh, yeah, so it'll be downstairs.
Be downstairs, so.
Okay, all right.
That's what we originally thought we were, so how many?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for reminding us of that, Joe. Okay, so tomorrow is the city development board downstairs, it sounds like Thursday is the ITC. Expansion open house out of Kirkwood's hotel, five thirty to seven. And uh next week, uh Cynthia, myself, and I believe Kate, on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, will be attending the I will at city.
That's next week already?
Yeah.
That's next week already. And there's still time to register, anyone else on the council that would like to attend dollar part, and there are some sessions on TIP.
And it is in Cedar Rapids.
It is in Cedar Rapids, so the closest it's ever gonna be.
Wednesday?
Next week.
Wednesday afternoon, all day Thursday and Friday morning, most of the seminars are on Thursday.
We are pretty much during the day, so I know that presents a challenge for people that work full-time during the day, but. That's all I have, Cynthia.
I was just gonna mention the conference, yeah.
Need a motion to adjourn, please.
A motion?
You're about anxious, right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, another one. Brian, have questions?